Ready? I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, February 16th. May we have the roll call, please Denise?
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Prodimbelson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here.
Close session?
We're going to a closed session. Public employee appointment, the title is City Manager.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Avalon City Council, Tuesday, February 16th. May we have the -- we've already had the roll call. If we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and place your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilman Sampson will lead us in an invocation.
Yes, I just want to ask you dear Lord that you would guide us, protect us, make our thoughts and our minds and our decisions clear and beneficial to the people of Avalon and the people of California and the United States as well. And I ask this prayer in your name, amen.
And if we could please have a moment of silence for the passing of George Doll, for Mia Belcito, and Robert Latka.
I have a couple of announcements. The city has received a couple of awards and our interim Public Works Director, as well as our capital improvements person, as well as our sewer system management project manager, went and received these awards. And the first one is from the Metropolitan Los Angeles branch. It's the American Society of Civil Engineers. And it's for the City of Avalon Sewer System Rehabilitation and Repair Program. Outstanding construction project. Good job Denise. And then the other one is an Engineering Excellence Merit Award. And it's to Michael Baker International, as well as the City of Avalon for the Sewer System Rehabilitation and Repair Program, 2016. So Dennis is well worth his money.
Yes he is.
And Dennis is mine.
Okay. And are there any written communica -- well, that was written in as well.
No, I do not.
Okay.
Is this the time to do announcements? Okay, good. Good evening, everybody. I've been asked to speak real quickly to dispel any rumors that may be out in the public regarding the city's transportation program. We want to be clear that the city-funded Dial-A-Ride program is not being discontinued. As a reminder, the city is in the process of soliciting proposals to operate the program. The Dial-A-Ride program will continue on. The city released a statement that was published in both local papers and is also posted on the homepage of the city website that describes the solicitation that's now in process, which may have caused inadvertent confusion to the Dial-A-Ride customers. If any member of the public has any questions regarding the Dial-A-Ride program, you can always email me, call me, or drop by City Hall. My phone number is 0220 extension 118-310510, 0220. My email address is audra1@cityofavalon.com, or you can just drop by City Hall and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and now we will open the public hearing?
Could we take that little order out of order and have Edison do their presentation?
Yes.
And LA Ricks?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Armita, can we just have you hold off for about five, 10 minutes? We're going to have the two presentations first, is that okay? Jeff, you're up.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jeff Lawrence, Senior Project Manager for Southern California Edison, here to provide you an update on our Stage Two water rationing, as well as give you an update on our desalination plant number two and the outlook for this summer. So as of last Thursday, the Middle Ranch Reservoir water level was at 197 acre feet. Typically, this would be below the 200 acre foot trigger for implementing Stage Three water rationing, but as you're all aware, in November 22nd, the CPUC approved our advice filing to not immediately implement further stages of rationing once the reservoir dipped below the 200 acre foot level. So we currently remain at a Stage Two level. We continue to see a very strong trend from month to month on the island's conservation efforts and their ability to reduce water use. In the month of January, compared to our baseline period, we reduced water use by over 40 percent. This while visitor counts increased by over 14 percent. And as I've reported several times now, this has been a consistent trend between 35%, 40% water reduction compared to our baseline period. Tremendous efforts from the island are certainly paying off here. This equated to a reduction in water use of over eight acre feet for the month of January. For the last 12 months, from February 15th to January 2016, we've been able to reduce water use by over 42 percent. This while visitor counts are up almost 28 percent for that same period of time. For the last 12 months, we've reduced water use by 164 acre feet, and this is equivalent to about an eight month supply of water. If you look at the entire period of time we've been in Stage Two water rationing, we've been able to reduce water use by 277 acre feet, almost a year's supply of drinking water for the island. Really tremendous results here. And one reason why we have been able to defer Stage Three as long as we have, because of the successful results of Stage Two. The chart you're looking at here is the water violations that we have code enforcement out on a regular basis, and the community continues to acknowledge the water restrictions that are and prohibitions that are in place. We haven't seen any new violations since the last time I updated the council. We still sit at 128 violations. And this is including the new violations that we've implemented around watering within 48 hour period after it rains. And then we've also been working with the hotels to ensure they're offering their customers that they can reuse their linens and their towels, they don't have to have them washed on a daily basis. And the hotels have been very responsive in that new restriction. So we want to thank the public for that. This is a slightly different slide than we've previously presented. We used to report to you the number of customers that were multiple time offenders for their monthly water allotments. What this chart is doing now, it's separating the repeat offenders, if you will, from the customers that have just received their second violation, which would result in a flow restrictor. So the red line is the percentage of customers on a monthly basis that have received a violation two or more times. And then of that red line is the blue line that you see below. Those are the customers that were, received their second violation and received a flow restrictor for the first time. So essentially on the red line, you're seeing a range of between 3 and 7 percent fairly consistently. So one way you can look at that is that 3 to 7 percent of the time, we're seeing customers that are out of compliance with their water allotment. But essentially what we're seeing is our customers, 93 percent of the time, are staying under the water allotment, which I think is exceptional, a very good percentage. The blue line ranges fairly consistently between 1 and 3 percent, and those are the customers that would have a flow restrictor issued. Through January 31st, we have issued 516 flow restrictors. The breakdown on that is 401 residential customers and 115 commercial customers. So I know at the last meeting, Jordan provided you an update on where we're at with the desalination plant. I want to provide some additional information on that. As you're all well aware, we completed primary construction on the desal plant number two back in November. Had a ribbon cutting ceremony on November 30th. And we're under, we were working with the Division of Drinking Water to have a temporary permit issued at that time. In December, we were informed by the Division of Drinking Water that they would not process a temporary letter to operate the desalination plant as originally agreed to. And so that's one reason why, even though the plant is ready to produce water, we don't have the permit, the drinking water permit to do so. We are working with the Division of Drinking Water to receive an amended permit, which is a more stringent process than simply getting a temporary permit. So we will have a fully operational plant in the seawater mode, producing an additional 60,000 gallons of water over what our current plant can do by mid-March.
Mid-March now?
By mid-March, correct.
And that's 60?
That'll be a total of 260,000 gallons that we will be capable of producing on a daily basis. So in comparison, the existing desalination plant can produce 200,000 gallons when it's in full production. So come mid-March, we'll be able to produce 260,000 gallons on a daily basis.
And can you elaborate as to why, because conversations leading up to November were basically that we would have this temporary permit, we'd be up and running around November 19th. Can you explain why the temporary permit was not granted?
Yeah, what they said was the temporary permit is out of their normal protocols. We met with them on December 21st to find out if they can make an exception, issue us the temporary permit as originally agreed to. At the time, they were open to it, however, they said that they still needed additional information, that we then had to do additional commissioning and pilot testing of the plant before we could produce those results. And then since then, they have said, in fact, they are going to stick to their, what we found out in December, was that they want to issue an amended permit. And they're going to take about 30 days from when we provide them the results of the commissioning and pilot testing to issue that amended permit.
And do you feel pretty confident that we're going to have this settled in mid-March?
Yes.
Or does Edison, I'm sorry, does Edison feel confident?
Yes.
Okay.
At this point, all indications are we will have a fully functional plant come mid-March.
Okay. So obviously, the concern is, you know, at some point, I believe we're expecting to see a cloud tomorrow, but at some point, if said rain never does magically appear, you know, we're going to be in a world of hurt come summer.
Yeah, understood. We are hearing news of, from the weather experts, that the rainy season is going to be extended into April with the impacts of El Nino, where initially, we were thinking the rainy season was going to be January to March. We're now looking at, you know, a couple, an extra additional month of potential rainfall to help us bring that Middle Ranch Reservoir water level up. So at this point in time, I think to segue where you're going with this Cindy, looking at the summertime, a determination has not been made on further stages of rationing. We don't want to make a preliminary assertion that we're going into further stages of rationing when we still have potentially two, two and a half months of rainy season that could impact the water level in the reservoir. So we'll be able to make a determination and a communication to the public come mid-April on whether we need to implement further stages of the 25 percent rationing we're currently in.
Jeff, when are we going to get the other 90 acre feet out of the new plant?
So that will be come mid-June. So we're going to go through commissioning and pilot testing then for the brine mode, which will be able to produce collectively 325,000 gallons, up to 325,000 gallons on a daily basis. 200,000 from the existing plant and up to 125,000 gallons per day from the new plant.
You can't make an estimation of when, or projection of when Stage Three might hit us? I mean, because we have to make projections as well, so.
Well, I can tell you that no determination's been made, but we could potentially end up in further stages of rationing come June.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we'll continue to update as we get closer to March and April on that status.
Yeah, we need to work with city planners, stakeholders, and the people that we answer to, because they want to know how they can project their business and their assets towards summertime and.
Absolutely.
We want to stay as positive as we can, but we also want to be realistic about this to the people. We don't want to leave them hanging on this one.
No, completely agree.
But thank you for everything that you guys have done in a very expedient way as far as getting this desalination plant up and running. I appreciate it. And I want to let you finish this and then ask you another question or two.
Absolutely. Let's see if there's anything else I should cover here. Along with the determination of further stages of rationing, a percentage of rationing has not been determined either. So as I mentioned before, originally, our Stage Three water rationing plan would have been 50 percent. If we do need to enter further stages of rationing, it could be at a lesser percent than 50 percent. That determination will be made along with the implementation date, and there'll be a number of factors we need to consider to make that determination. But we want to toe the line between giving the community as much notice as possible and not making a decision too soon, where we're then expending dollars and alarming the community that this is coming, and then we get some rain in March and the reservoir level rises, so.
Can that communication before you all of a sudden one day say, "And this is what it is"? Can that discussion be done with the City of Avalon, Catalina Island Company, Chamber of Commerce, so we can all have a buy-in into what that might be, instead of just one day you go, "Oh, it's not going to be 50 percent, it's going to be 43"? You know, can there be dialogue before that?
We can certainly dialogue beforehand as far as our communication plan, but we want to make sure we do it in a timely manner so that we can also inform the public as quickly as possible. We can certainly make that part of our communication plan to work with you and others.
I mean, for you all to make that in a vacuum, I guess, is a little disconcerting. And so it'd be nice if you could say, "Okay, now we're, you know, we haven't gotten the rain," or "We have gotten the rain," and especially "We haven't gotten the rain." I think that's where the open communication really needs to be happening.
I understand.
And not just being told what you're doing, but how we can maybe.
But a lot of it is analytical as far as what the reservoir level is, what our forecasted demand is for the summer.
Yeah.
How comfortable are we with the reservoir level declining? At what point do we need to implement? It's a lot of analysis that goes into that decision.
No, I get that. But then when it comes to businesses now have to put another sign up, or they have to put a drip in the thing, I mean, if they could help with those solutions in their businesses and in their homes, you know.
We're going to do our best to allow for as much time as possible for those communications and preparations.
Thank you.
Jeff, just one other question. It would be nice to see Edison be represented at the meetings a little more often at this and keep us informed a little more through that. Is that possible, or is that, do we have to, do we just make an appointment with them, Denise?
So you'd like them here more than once a month?
More than once a month. I would like to, especially we're getting to this stage before third stage and all that. Give us more update.
You'd like us here for every meeting then?
Correct, if possible.
I could certainly bring that back to our Public Affairs and our management and see if we could have a representative here. It probably wouldn't be me for every meeting, but possibly we could have another representative when I'm not on agenda.
Okay.
On the second meeting of the month.
I think that would be helpful with everybody.
Is that the consensus of everyone then?
I mean, if the district manager, I mean, if Mr. Height could be here, that would be nice, because he's on island, or I know.
I mean, that's just my thing.
Whoever, if you have someone else there, second in command, or whatever.
Yeah, we will certainly work with Denise to be placed on the agenda if there is a significant update to share with you. So maybe I could work with Denise to see if attendance at every meeting is necessary based on the update that we have at the time. Be happy to do that with you Denise.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Keep going.
I know a question came up at the last meeting as far as how many permitting agencies have been involved with the desalination plant number two, and I wanted to update you on that. SE will have all necessary permits for the plant to be online and operational by mid-March, and we've been working with three agencies on the desalination plant to ensure that occurs. The first, as you know, is the Division of Drinking Water, provided you a status on that permit. The second is the Los Angeles County Regional Water Quality Control Board, and the permit in question there is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit. And we received an approval letter from them on June 30th. And then our permit will be updated during our normal permit renewal process. So we have a green light from LA County on the desalination plant. The third agency is the California Coastal Commission, and on July 10th, we received an immaterial permit from them. And then within 12 months of the plant being online and operational, we'll apply for a permanent permit with them. So we have been working with these agencies for a number of months and to ensure that we have all the permits necessary to make sure that plant is operational this summer, by this summer. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
My question is about some, there's some people in Avalon that they haven't really upgraded their allocation. So you guys will continue to be understanding that some people just need more water, but they haven't adjusted their allocation yet. I know a lot of older people and some handicap people that I actually work for have had this problem, and you guys have been understanding of that. So going into the different stages, as we get deeper into water rationing, you guys will still be understanding to those people as well, right? When, because they get a warning first, right? Correct?
Well, they'll, the clock doesn't start over when you go from Stage Two to Stage Three. So if they're on their second warning now, then they'll go on their third warning if we do go into Stage Three.
Okay.
But there will be an opportunity if we increase the percentage of rationing and a customer has extenuating circumstances and they want us to review their specific situation, we will consider that and possibly extend an increased water allotment. It's on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, great. So at this point right now, you can still call Mary Schickling at Southern California Edison, or is it just a general information number that you guys give out for that? Because usually, Mary Schickling has been understanding the people in Avalon. She's somebody that people know, and she's been really, really good about letting people understand that what their water allocation was and what they need. My problem is, a lot of people think, are thinking, I've met people recently that had five, six, eight, 10 gallons of water per day, and I think that's an unreasonable amount. I've encouraged them to call the Edison office and let them know that, what their situation is. I mean, they've lived with that much, but I think it's unreasonable to think that somebody can actually get by with that little amount of water, especially going in to the deeper stages of conservation. So I just want to encourage people to give Edison a call, and if you have less than 10, 15 gallons of water per day, ask them to boost that up and try to get at least 20, so that going into Stage Three, you will have, you will at least have 15 gallons a day per person for your household, which I still think that's a little, that's not quite enough. But I want to get people to boost up their allocations now before we get too deep into this, because I see a lot of water being wasted out in the interior, and I'm not really, I'm really too happy about it. While my constituents aren't taking showers when they need to, because they feel like they're going to ruin the water situation that we have here in Avalon. So I want to let people know, speak up, it's the squeaky wheel that gets the grease, and you need at least 15 gallons to 20 gallons a day, in my opinion. You guys might see things differently, but I know you're reasonable about people's requests, so.
Yeah, and Joe, I wouldn't even say that the squeaky wheel gets the grease. We have a process in place to adjust our water allotments during Stage Two for customers that were already very frugal water users. And so a 25 percent reduction, if deemed unreasonable, will be adjusted accordingly. That process has been there since August of 2014.
But it's not automatic.
And it has not changed. No, you would need to provide some information to us to consider how many residents are in the home.
So they have to bring it to your attention?
Absolutely.
Okay. The squeaky wheel does get the grease.
Well, what I'm saying is you don't need to escalate an issue that we're not responding to if you simply provide us information. We've had a process in place since day one, and we'll consider everyone equally and equitably to adjust their water allotment if the conditions warrant it.
Okay. I'm just concerned about people's health and safety, that they clean themselves and they understand that they don't have to live off five gallons a day, and that you guys are understanding about increasing the allotment if there is some kind of a problem like that.
I would agree with you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Nobody should be subject to five gallons a day on a permanent basis.
I appreciate your understanding.
Anything else?
For me, no. You're a pro?
Nope. Thanks Jeff.
I would ask a question.
Sure.
Is there a rate increase proceeding in progress at this time?
No, there's not.
Does Edison have a plan?
There's no plans. If you're asking specifically from the desalination project, all the final costs aren't in, so we don't know what type of rate impact this project's going to have at this point in time.
For 12 and 14, isn't there a rate increase?
Wait, you need to go, you need to go up to the mic, Pam, sorry. I'm not sorry, but.
So my question had to do with, the last rate increase went into effect in 2014, is that correct? January of 2014?
I think it went in January 1st of this.
2015.
2015.
And that was for 11 and 12, as I recall. It incorporated those numbers. So the question is whether there are plans to seek a rate increase, because according to the annual filing, you were down about 1.3 million in water expenses over, that's how much you spent over your revenue, and 1.3 in 2014.
Yeah, it's certainly not my area of expertise or anything that my group is responsible for. I'm not aware of any current plans to implement a rate increase at this time.
No further questions?
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Chuck, Chuck, go to the mic, please.
Chuck Martin, 352 Catalina, will our water usage continue to be compared to 2012? Or will they change that? Right now, our usage is compared to what we used in 2012. Will that just continue to be that year?
So yeah, we've established a baseline period, and it was the 12 months before we went into Stage One water rationing, and that was June 2012 through May 2013. And that was to establish your baseline and the amount that we would then reduce by 25 percent. That baseline period will still remain for any further stages of rationing.
Okay. And now.
LA Ricks?
Yes.
There's a lot of amount in the audience.
Everybody's standing.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Mallon. I'm the Executive Director for the LA Ricks Joint Powers Authority. Thank you for your time. It's a pleasure to come to your island today. Just to give you a little bit of a very brief history on the project, we go back to 2009 with the formation of the Joint Powers Authority. But it was really, the focus of the effort was kind of as aftermath of what happened on 9/11, when firefighters and public safety police responded to the World Trade Center. And because of lack of communications, they were literally trapped inside the building as the buildings were collapsed. And they had that, you know, information that things were looking pretty poorly, but they couldn't get the information to the public safety officials. So interoperability is what it's called. That's the idea of being, of police and fire and emergency medical response personnel being able to communicate with each other. So Los Angeles County as a whole has about 34,000 first responders and, as you know, about 10 million, you know, 10 million residents, you know. And on Catalina Island here, you've got 3,500 residents just in the city of Avalon. We're clearly concerned about the ability of the Avalon Fire Department to respond with the Sheriff's Department and to be augmented with, you know, with county fire for the back country. So as it stands today, with about 24 members remaining within the Joint Powers Authority, even though there was a number of cities that did opt out, Avalon being not one of those, thank you very much, within the county, we still have to provide radio communication services to about 68 of the 88 cities within the county. And that's the idea, is to provide day-to-day communication services for all public safety officials, including emergent. officials, including emergency medical services. That's so that we can go without borders. We could leave the city of Avalon and go into the back country, and everybody have the ability to communicate all the way over into the Twin Harbors, as well as out into your harbor here in Avalon. The federal government in 2012 directed that the T-band frequency, which is the primary radio frequencies that are operated on with public safety throughout Los Angeles County, be auctioned in 2021. So we are building a radio system that will allow a migration into a different radio band. And I had a very productive conversation with Chief Krug tonight about the future of public safety communications for the Avalon Fire Department. We will have continued conversations with Chief Krug and your wonderful city managers. So the idea is to be able to provide interoperability between all public safety agencies. And just by comparison, today in Los Angeles County, there are over 40 different radio systems to support public safety. And quite frankly, it doesn't work very well. So we are in the process of developing the final plan for the land mobile radio system, as well as a broadband, a public safety broadband system that's being rolled out across the country. And Los Angeles County is fortunate in being one of the early builders and early adopters throughout the country. So we came here today to really, you know, to present a draft environmental impact report, and I'm gonna turn it over to one of our environmental specialists. But I would like to close with a comment from Daryl, from Chief Daryl Hosby from County Fire. And this goes back into the station fire that occurred back in 2009, when we had public safety agencies from around the country, from around the state responding. And when we got there, they were not able to communicate. It took a day or so to be able to establish communications between the agencies, and that, quite frankly, from a public safety perspective, is not acceptable. I would also like to introduce two members from the Los Angeles County team, Chief Kirby Neese from County Fire Department, and Lieutenant Judy Anderson from the Sheriff's Department. So with that, I will turn it over to our environmental specialists, who will cover the next couple of slides.
Great, thank you.
And that's Jim Hoyt.
Good evening. My name's Jim Hoyt. I'm the Environmental Lead for the LA RICS program, and I want to thank you for having us out on the island today. We're here doing part of, and I'm not quite sure how this works, but I'm gonna give it a try. We're here doing the, sorry, thank you. We're here doing the sequel process, the environmental impact report. That process began about two years ago. We filed a notice of preparation. We did scoping back in 2014. We did, held scoping meetings throughout Los Angeles County. We had five of them, the closest we came to here was San Pedro. But we closed that process out, and we started immediately going about putting together an environmental impact report for 54 sites out of approximately 90 site system. Part of the LA RICS program is we have available to us a statutory exemption that was passed into law back in 2012, signed by Governor Brown, that if we meet the criteria of that, then sites can be exempted from the sequel process. Sites also, going into the program, didn't meet those criteria, and those are the sites that are in the environmental impact report. And so where we are in the process now is, we've reviewed, or I'm sorry, we released a public draft of the EIR. That happened on January 12th. We have a 45-day public comment window. We are holding six public meetings to go over that document. The public comment period ends next week, February 25th. And so we're gathering responses to the draft EIR, and we'll be busily going about responding to those comments and creating a final EIR, which we anticipate will be certified sometime in spring 2016. So our EIR again addresses 54 sites. We look at sites for approx, it's 13 different resource areas, ranging from aesthetics, air quality, biology, cultural resources, noise, et cetera. And those are the criteria that are evaluated in the EIR. And then we stratified those based on the level of impact that would occur if project implementation were to happen. And that's, you know, no impact at all, less than significant, less than significant but mitigable, to below significant level, and then significant and unavoidable impacts. And we have very, very few sites from this project that have hit the level of significant and unavoidable. We have three sites here on the island. None of them got to that level. We do have mitigation associated with them, which brings the impacts below that level. And again, the other sites that are in the system, those are the ones that were exempted. That's pursuant to public resources, the public resources code that's cited there. The three sites are Tower Peak, Blackjack, and Dakin Peak. The 180-foot towers, up to 180-foot towers proposed for Tower and Blackjack, and then up to a 200-foot tower, up to 200 feet at Dakin Peak. We tried to look at the potential for impacts at that maximum level that we're addressing in the EIR. And so where we are now is, we're at closing out our public comment period next week. We held our last of six public meetings. We were gonna try and be here a couple of weeks ago, and weather precluded us from coming. Most of our meetings ended a couple of weeks ago. We're receiving comments now down to two ways. We were at three, but since our last public meeting has closed out, we're accepting comments either by mail, US mail, postmarked by February 25th, or by email, received by February 25th at the hotline number you see there. And that's our presentation for tonight. Thank you very much.
So I'm sorry for my ignorance. You show pictures of those three sites. So these are proposed, these things are not there yet?
These are existing communication sites where we're proposing build of new towers. That's correct. Construction of new towers.
Okay. And who pays for those?
So this is, I want to stay in my environmental sphere.
Oh, okay.
I'll get back to Pat.
We have a number of federal grants under the Yowasi and the Shishkaup, which is under the Department of Homeland Security, and so the sites would be built using federal grant dollars.
Questions from the public?
Allison Osensky, 356 Sumner. Just wondering, instead of spending all this money to put up towers, why aren't they just using satellite communications or something? Why not just buy satellite phones for everybody?
The system that we're looking at is a land mobile radio system. It's very similar to the radios that you see on police and fire ships today. They are not satellite. There is, because of FCC regulations, anything that we might put at any one of the sites cannot interfere with other operable radio systems. So satellite phones won't be part of it. We cannot interfere with the existing radio communications that are at those sites. That's whoever's there first has the right.
Okay. Other questions?
Thank you very much. We have a vote.
No, thank you very much. Okay. Now we're going to the public hearing, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for coming. I hope you had a good day on the island. Okay. So I'd like to open the public hearing.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Armin Saint. I work for Metro. I'm the project manager for TDA Article 8. I have opening remarks, which explain why I'm here today, and open to, afterwards will open it to public comments. The public portion of this meeting is held to hear testimony regarding the allocation of Transportation Development Act, TDA Article 8 funds. The California Transportation Development Act enacted in 1972 provides the major source of state funds to support public transit services. One quarter of a cent is collected as part of the statewide retail sales tax in this county and is placed in a local transportation fund for TDA Articles 3, 4, and 8, which is used to support public transportation within the county. The TDA fund is divided as follows. TDA 4 recipients receive 9.91, I'm sorry, 91.6%. TDA 3 is capped at 2%, and TDA 8 receives 6.3, 3.6, 3.5% of the share. By statute, most of the money, the 91.6% share in LA County goes to support the operation of our regional bus service, such as Metro and municipal operators, Long Beach Transit and Santa Monica. These services are funded in part by TDA Article 4. Additionally, some of the funds are used to support facilities for pedestrian and bicycles. This is known as TDA Article 3, for the 2% of the share. Article 8 of the TDA requires that a proportional share, based on population, approximately 6.35% of the sales tax revenue, to be collected and allocated to those areas in the county that do not have metro service because they're located outside of metro service area. These areas are Santa Clarita Valley, Antelope Valley, and Catalina Island. Transit needs can reasonably met through an expansion of existing transportation systems by establishing new systems or by contracting for services. However, if there are no unmet transit needs, which can be reasonably met with these funds, the funds may be used for local public streets and roads purposes. While the purpose of this hearing is to determine how TDA Article 8 funds should be allocated, your testimony about transit needs may be useful to local decision-makers who are planning possible uses for Proposition A, C, and Measure R funds. The Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority holds a public hearing each year to determine what transit needs exist in your community before recommending how these funds should be allocated. Metro staff will compile your comments, along with comments made at all hearings, including written comments received before the deadline. The Social Service Transportation Advisory Council, composed of local residents and social service providers, will consider your comments and make a recommendation to TDA 8 Hearing Board. The Hearing Board will make a recommendation to the full MTA board. LACMTA board will act in June to make the findings about the use of TDA Article 8 funds in your community. The LACMTA's board's recommendation will be forwarded to the state for review and approval. If you wish to submit written comments in addition to, or instead of testifying verbally, the record for all hearings will be kept open for two weeks after the conclusion of the public hearings. Written comments must be received by March 9, 2016, for all affected areas. Your written comments should be submitted to the following address. Armin Saint, TDA Article 8 Hearing, Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Mail Stop 99-4-3, One Gateway Plaza, LA, California 90012, or could be emailed to sainta@metro.net. The public testimony portion of the hearing will now begin. Please remember to state your name and any organization you represent. Thank you.
Well, open it to the public comments.
Okay. Let's open to the public.
Allison Osensky, 356 Sumner. I'm just interested in the public transportation, whether this is going to be just, again, for tourists, or are we actually going to have public transportation we could use? I'm particularly concerned about what some people around here think is acceptable fees for the interior. You know, I have a boat at Two Harbors, and it cost me $57 each way to go to Two Harbors, less than 20 miles away. I think it's, we have ridiculous costs for getting to the backside of the island to use the beaches at Shark Harbor or to enjoy the interior. I think we need public transportation that includes the interior and getting to and from Two Harbors.
Any other comments?
Can I ask a question? Of course. Okay, so.
May I close the public hearing portion?
Well, maybe if I ask questions, somebody may want to.
Okay, go ahead.
Feed off of that, perhaps. So how much money do we get in Article 8?
It's about 140, estimated for 2016. I'll get to that in my presentation next. But I would say last year it was 141, 232, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, no, last year was 147.
Oh, 147, I'm sorry.
And this year it's projected 143, approximately 143,000.
Okay. But may I?
Of course.
Ask a question to, to kind of feed on what Allison said. The public transportation she's talking to would be public transportation onto conservancy property. Can something like that even be done with that kind of money? Where you provide transportation to people in a nonprofit area? It's not a public park, it's not a national park, it's, can you even use money for that?
On private roads.
On private roads, I guess.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Okay.
How can we find out?
Yeah, how can we find out?
I can.
Because that's extremely important, I believe.
This funding is available for public transportation for City of Avalon. So I can, I can contact the state and see if that is possible and let you know.
So it would basically be county. It would be exiting the city, moving on to the county.
County.
Because Two Harbors and the rest of the island is all county outside of the confines of the city here.
That's, that's where the complication is.
Okay.
I wouldn't know the answer to that. It's such a unique situation that I don't, I would like to consult with the state before rendering any opinion.
Okay, great. That would be nice to know. Okay.
Any other comments, questions?
No.
Allison Osensky, and everybody's back here talking about it. One of the concerns is the existing transportation we have in town doesn't work if you really want to go to the ferry on time. Also, they don't let you take any baggage, so it's, you know, worthless if you're going to the ferry. So you want to make sure that any new public transportation, even that's inside Avalon, does allow for schedules that would allow you to take it to get to the ferry on time, and that they would allow you to take baggage.
Is that in the trolley?
Whatever is involved. Right now, the trolley, yes. But if we have something that replaces that, and we actually want people in town to use it, that would be two of the things we'd be concerned about, that there's an ability to handle luggage, and that there's some sort of schedule that it would actually allow you to use it to get somewhere on time.
Really good points. I just want to, in all fairness to our city staff, who have put in an exceptional amount of time in this, they have looked at that, and that has been part of developing the schedule for the new e-buses and the importance of it. So there's been many discussions at this particular forum about that, and city staff has gone above and beyond in making sure that they've addressed that.
If there are no more comments, I'll close the public hearing right now, and then open it up to the presentation that my colleague, Susan Regent, who's the project manager for TDA Article 3, and also local return, prepared for you. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here today, so I'm gonna present the slides. Basically, this is overview of all the transportation funding that Avalon receives through different sources of funding. We have Transportation Development Act, TDA Article 8 and 3, which is set aside by state from the sales tax, a portion of state's sales tax. TDA, and we have local return funds. From Prop A, we have 25% share. This is also sales tax. Prop C, we have 20%, and Measure R, 15% of the shares. In addition to that, we have the Prop A incentive funds. It's 5% of the 40% discretionary fund. It's, it usually funds the dialer rides and such services. And in the case of City of Avalon, it funds the portion of the ferry service and land service as well. And in addition to all those, we have call for projects. Every funding that I mentioned is sort of guaranteed, depending, of course, on a sales tax and a number of, and a population. But they're guaranteed, you receive them every year. But for. But for Call for Projects, it's, it's a call and depends on, on the project, you might not, you're not guaranteed a spot on that. And move on to the next slide. TDA Articles eight and three are, again, state funding sources. TDA eight is for areas of the county that does not have metro service, is outside of metro service area. So, state provides the funding in lieu of that. And that could be spent on the transit services. And if, in hearings like this, it's determined that there are unmet needs that could be, could be met through the transit funding, other transit funding, then the, the funds could be spent on streets and roads as well. In your, in your case, it's always spent on transit. TDA Article eight is capped at 2% and it's for, it's dedicated to bikes and pedestrian uses. And, I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, TDA eight is usually, it's sales tax but based on population and it's around 6.35% of the funds. For Local Return, which is from the sales tax that was approved over the years, Prop A was approved in 1980 and sets aside 25% of Local Return share to be used exclusively to benefit public transit. And Prop C was approved in 1990 and sets aside 20% share to benefit public transit or to improve the roads, street improvements to, you know, facilitate the transit. Prop A was, has only three, was divided into three parts, I'm sorry. 35% is going to rail transit, 40% is discretionary, and 25% to Local Return. For Prop C, it's divided into 40% discretionary, 25% transit-related highway improvements, 20% on Local Return, 5% for transit security, and 10% for commuter rail park and ride lots and bus, bus stops, freeway bus stops specifically. Measure R, which was approved by the voters in 2008, sets aside 15% of the Local Return share to meet the transportation needs of Los Angeles County. As it's pointed out here, 35% goes to transit capital, 20% to highway capital, 15 to Local Return, 20% to bus operations, 5% to rail operations, and 2% to metro rail capital and 3% to Metrolink. Metrolink is a commuter service. Next slide. It lists all the, all the Call for Project funding that is awarded to Avalon. And one, one project that is not listed here and I found out that it's just been awarded is...
Five Corners and Avalon Canyon Pedestrian Project, $3 million.
So, that would...
That's great.
So, that would bring the total up to $6.4 million through Call for Project. The Call for Project source is varied. It's portion of the local taxes versus, and federal and state also combined brings up the Call for Project sourcing. Next slide is the total of City of Avalon funds that will be received by end of 2016. In TDA eight, Avalon would be receiving $143,632. TDA three, which is a very small portion, $5,000. In Local Return Funds are listed as well. And Prop A incentive in ferry, about $650,000, and land for $250,000, totaling to 1.2 million for 2016. This does not include the Call for Project funding at all. This slide basically gives a funding totals for over, over 10 years period. And you can see that most, the highest funding is Prop A, 5% for the ferry, which amounts to 5.5 million dollars. And next one is Prop A, 5% for discretionary incentive land services, 2.5 million dollars. And number three, and the funding level is the TDA Article eight in 1.1, almost about 1.2 million dollars. The smallest portion is the TDA Article three in $50,000. That's because it's capped at 2%, as I mentioned, and it's, it's not much compared to the others. And last slide, basically, this shows the trends and due to, because all these funding is dependent on the sales tax, would due to recession, you would see a downfall decrease and then it goes back up again. In the last two years, it's been, it's been kind of constant due to, again, sales tax revenues have not been, haven't increased drastically to show the increase there. That concludes my presentation. I'm open to answer any questions you might have.
Can I just add a few things?
Sure, please.
Can, can we go back to this slide? Because I just want to, and I want to put it in real terms for, for the public. Just so you know what we use this money for, I think that's really important. The TDA Article eight goes to fund the transit program, the dial-a-ride, the taxi voucher, and the fixed route. The TDA Article three at 5,000, we usually build that up over a couple of years and then we use it to do sidewalk repairs, usually at Lover's Cove. That is one of our favorite places to spend that money. The Prop A at 68980 is, goes to the dial-a-ride, land transportation, taxi voucher, trolley. Same with Prop C, same with Measure R. The ferry, obviously, is our commuter subsidy program. And then the other, the land, Prop A incentive, 250,000, also goes to the trolley, dial-a-ride, and taxi voucher program. So, I just wanted to put it in real terms.
Since public comment can still be received through March 9th, could we put that information up on the city's website so anybody who wants to write in any comments? So, the, and specifically, your initial presentation, the couple pages that you read from, was, you went through it so fast that even I missed a few things on there, so I'd love to reread it again.
Sure.
So, putting it on the city's website makes it available to everybody.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have one question from Audra. Maybe that would answer the question that council members had. Was, is the funding for TDA Article eight, I know it, it goes to the, it goes for transit services, but is that, do, do you have, is that all consumed by transit services? So, even if I get a response from the state, would that, would there be any funding available for that type of a service?
It's a good question and the answer is no. We don't have any extra in the transit fund.
So, we, it would have to be that other member talking about the call to order or whatever.
So, I, I guess the question was to, to try and connect the, the, into the interior of the island, the amount of money received stays the same. So, it would take it out of here to add it somewhere else and then maybe reduce the service here, which I don't know if that's, if we could do that. That's what she's going to find out.
I'm going to find out if you, if you use all the funding for current transit services, how, you know, my answer, even if it's a yes, it's, you know.
But, but all the transit money's being spent in Avalon, the transit money being spent in the other 74 square miles. So, all the unincorporated areas would probably be eligible for some LA County money.
Maybe it could go to LA County portion. I could, I, I can find that out as well from Caltrans.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
No. No. Sorry about the bad weather. Thank you. Okay, now we'll continue to move on. Okay, and now we're at city, city manager's report?
I have none.
City attorney report?
Yes, we received notice this morning from the Department of Fish and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services that our Catalina foxes have been very, very busy and they are proposed to be removed from the endangered species and moved to threatened species. So, their population increases significant over the last couple of years.
That was great, excellent.
That's good.
And that's all the attorney?
That's it.
Okay, council member reports. Who would like to start?
I have a couple of quick ones. Um, I attended the Gateway City's Council of Government and the Transportation Committee meeting, I think it was the third, the day after our last council meeting. And I am so, so, so very proud to announce that on behalf of all of the hard work of the employees of Catalina Beverage and their leader, Levent Alkebay, that the Anheuser-Busch Clydesdales will be coming to Avalon for the week over the Fourth of July. There will be many different festivities that are underway and planning, but it'll be a wonderful opportunity for members of our community to interact. And it's something that Levent and Catalina Beverage team have been working on for about a year and a half now. And so, we appreciate those efforts very much and thank Levent for his efforts in doing something else for our community.
That's wonderful. Yay!
And I think my other announcements David's probably going to get to here shortly, so I'll let him do them.
Okay, anybody else?
My, Audrey answered all mine. I had dial-a-ride stuff, but she clearly answered all those.
And Richard has requested that Audra come to every meeting for a while to keep saying the same thing so the public knows what's happening with the transportation.
You get a lot of questions.
That's great.
You get a lot of questions. On who's saying it.
Right. Council member Sampson?
Fine, thank you.
Mayor Potam?
I know why I live in Catalina now. Couple of weeks ago, I went to a league briefing on medical marijuana in beautiful Burbank. I left my condo in Long Beach at 7:30 and arrived in beautiful Burbank at 9:40. That's just too long to drive over there. But it was a very informative briefing on marijuana, medical marijuana. There's also a couple of options that come out of that that we might want to explore, but not this evening. And in a week, in 10 days, I'm going to the league's division meeting in Los Angeles.
Oh, leave early. I mean, wake up early.
Yeah, right.
Okay, yes, and I had spoken to Denise and also had a little conversation with the city attorney today about the, we really need to get, we really need to get educated on the marijuana thing. So, whatever information you have, I don't know if we're going to need a special meeting at some time. I think we need to look at the initiative that, that might be placed on the ballot at some time in the future, really understand that, see if that is, if that is the initiative that it goes solo or if we have comments and we would like to have a different measure. We really need to look at this seriously in the very near future. So, any information you have as well and how we can get educated. Again, I have a contact to the main, on the mainland, but I don't know how we want to, to actually make this happen so that we all get the information and can decide what we want to do moving forward.
I'll give it to Ms. Ratty and she can distribute it.
Perfect, excellent. Anything else, sir?
No, ma'am.
That's a good question. So, for the, because I know both of you have gone to a couple of different meetings and I know there's been some great information, so it's okay, you'll give, from, from both that you've went to, you'll give the information to Denise and she'll disperse it to all of us? Okay.
That's great.
But I think there needs to be a dialogue. We really need to have a conversation about this, not just read up in our own little world. We will, it's pretty important. Yes. Okay. I just have a couple of things. Happy belated birthday to Valerie Willis, who was, was 100 years old on Valentine's Day and we, we had a proclamation put together for her and I took it over to her little party before the party started. So, anyway, that's pretty remarkable. I think she's right now our oldest person in Avalon. And also, on Valentine's Day at noon, there was a flash mob for Break the Chain, which is putting an end to domestic violence. It was a small but mighty crowd. So, anyway, it was fun to participate in that as well and we thank the efforts of those who put that together. So, they want to do this every year. The 15th year it's happened, but only the second year in Avalon. So, hopefully we'll get more people out next year. That's all I can... Oral communications. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes and no action will be taken.
David Hart, City of Avalon's Recreation Department. Signups for youth basketball has started. For the first time, we are also including kindergarten age, along with the first and second graders to teach fundamentals in the games. Then, we have our competitive leagues, grades third through fifth and six through eighth, boys' and girls' divisions. It's just $30 to sign up, which includes your insurance, your reversible uniform, and a basketball. And you can sign up at City Hall. The Avalon Recreation Department completed the LA County Parks Needs Assessment. We do appreciate the community that did come out. We had a strong group, around 25 to 30 people who participated in this. The information that we compiled will help the county assess their overall needs and help to develop propositions or measures to receive funding in the future. I will have a full report on the assessment on the city website tomorrow, so if you want to read up on that and what was voted on, what we felt was necessary for our city as well as the county, it will be up on our City of Avalon website.
And before you proceed, I was at that meeting and I went, David Hart did a great presentation and he had Jen and Jordan and Lisa all volunteered. It was very well done, thank you.
It was really good. We had, we were able to pull a lot out just for ourselves as well, besides the county. So, I think that's going to help us start to direct a citywide assessment in the future as well. This one's kind of dear to me. Avalon High School Boys and Girls Basketball Teams, both made the playoffs. The boys will be playing home Wednesday night against Thatcher High School at 5:00 PM. The girls' team went undefeated in league and ended, ended up with a number two ranking in, in our division. And they will get a first round bye, but will play a second round game here at home Saturday night at 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Congratulations.
David, question. Do you have any for your basketball program, do you have any scholarship money available?
Do we have scholarships available?
Yeah.
Currently, no. We do, we do run a scholarship group through, through CIMC where they have, they, they give, they, they purchase rights to our programs and then they give them out to kids to get them to start moving, to kids who may not even think about playing a sport or dance or any other activity that we have. And they, they pay for that and, yes, they, they sponsor them and, and then bring them to us.
You might want to send a letter to the Lions.
Oh, okay, I will do that.
They like kids.
Thank you.
And then, David, I'm sorry, the one that I thought you were maybe going to talk about is the March 3rd.
Oh, the Fit Trail.
The Fit Trail. Can you, can you talk about that one?
Yes, we just put, we just put that out. It's going to be our second series on, on the Fit Trail. We're going to give our findings from the last one. I think, I believed we had about 12, 12 to 13 who came here, but we also reached out to the school as well as to senior centers to get their information. We're hoping on March 3rd at 5:00 PM here at City Hall... Um, we're hoping on March third, at five PM here at City Hall, that, um, we'll get more community members who will be a part of this, that will help to decide the type of exercises that would be included in the Fit Trail. Last time, it was about where we thought the Fit Trail would best fit, um, and then based on their findings, um, we'll, we'll be able to decide a little bit more of the details.
And those of us that are senior citizens can order our senior meal and eat it at Singing Waters that day, because they will be going there at around lunchtime as well, I understand.
Yes, absolutely.
So come on, Ollie.
So, when is the conference that you're going to, the Southern California, or the Recreation Conference, is that after this assessment?
Um, yes, it's gonna be March eighth, it's gonna be, um, for the California Parks and Recreation Conference, you'll, I'll be taking leadership classes in, um, from there, but also see some of, uh, the latest updates in, in equipment and parks and...
So, would it make sense to maybe move this to after, or not?
Um, I can speak with Brian, who's been, um, running the set, the Fit Trail Assessment, and talk about that, him and, along with Audra as well, who's been a big part of this.
I mean, if you're still getting community input and whatnot, I read the, the handbook that we received for that conference, and there is so much out there, and a lot of different park and equipment and whatnot, so, um, my thought is, is to maybe move that until after that conference, so that you have some other ideas that you can maybe share and get community input.
Yeah, I think it's great advice.
And whether you do or not is up to you, but...
No, I'll, I'll bring that up with Brian and Audra, because I think both of them have been huge in that, and, uh, I believe Brian will probably be also going to that as well, so I, I think it makes sense, I'll bring it up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other oral communications?
Good evening, just wanted to give you an update on the two capital improvements projects we have going on. Plus, I wanted to comment, Denise, on those awards that you mentioned earlier, thank you. However, I can't take full responsibility for that.
Or credit.
Yes. Past City Council, and this City Council, you all deserve the credit. As you know, uh, over two years ago, we finally, the City of Avalon finally got off the beach bummers list. One of the reasons was your, uh, actions, past and present council, past management. You invested a lot of money in sewers, and we've been in, um, continuing with the sewer, um, lateral inspection program, which has kept us off that list. It's very important. That CDO that looms over our head, we have to keep proactive, we gotta keep it up, so I wanna thank you all for that. The two capital improvements projects we have, as you all know, the fuel dock is no longer there, it's gone. Uh, we have a couple of potential design issues, uh, one with the existing seawall, and one with the substrate underneath the, uh, fuel dock. Our engineers are visiting the island on Thursday, and we're gonna develop a plan to, um, to, um, to get it resolved and make sure that that foundation is nice and firm. Uh, the Pebley Beach Casino Way, uh, K-Rail project has started, it's about two weeks in. Uh, we placed the K-Rail at Casino Way, uh, we still need to put the fencing and paint it and make it look good, but we started Pebley Beach the end of last week. Uh, we're gonna ask the public for their consideration and cooperation, we might have to close Pebley Beach a couple of times during the, um, the, the potential safety issue work that's gonna be going on, but we wanna thank you all for that. And if you have any questions on that, uh, on those projects, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise, I will go back to my chair.
There's a question from the audience.
I was just wondering about the fuel dock, when it's rebuilt, has anybody looked at relocating the water and pump out float? Whoever put it where it is, obviously, has never tried to maneuver a forty-foot boat into that space, it's ridiculous. Uh, are they taking that into consideration, that people need to get, need to pump out and they need to get water? Uh, are they making that part of the fuel dock design?
Everybody wants to answer this.
Stay, stay over there, Brian, uh-oh. Uh, this project has not considered the, uh, anything else besides the fuel dock, I'm sorry to say. If there was an issue, we can certainly bring it up, and staff can, uh, investigate it, but this point in time, uh, this project did not include anything with the rescue dock or the pump-out areas or gangways or anything like that. Okay?
Other communication?
Good evening, Pam Albers, two-one-seven, call it a little, sorry for the Brenda Garro voice, but it's that thing that's going around. So, um, you know, I like to get up here and talk numbers, so I'm gonna talk some water numbers, because as much as I appreciated Jeff's, um, report, I think all of us should be thinking back to how we got to where we are, and I see some parallels going. Yes, we have the D-SAL running right now, visitor counts are down, we all know that, and yet, we've lost two acre feet in a time period where we actually had some rain. If you look back at the numbers in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, after we went into stage one, the D-SAL plant many months was only pumping out eighty-eight thousand gallons a day, even though it could've done more, which meant that we had drawdowns of five acre feet a week. Keep in mind, an acre foot is three hundred and twenty thousand gallons, so for the time period that Jeff reported about, we pulled out six hundred and forty gallons out of the reservoir, plus whatever rain had accumulated, instead of using D-SAL water, which, given the way that Sacramento doesn't always move as quickly as we need them to, March could be, May could be, June could be, July, and we're the ones who really are the only ones that can save water. There is very little we can do with our visitors without impacting the visitor experience. So, I think that it, it would really be helpful for this City Council to encourage them to make as much water, to get, to use whatever data you have available to guess the right numbers, instead of being conservative production of water, maybe produce a little bit more than they, they have been, so we don't have these drawdowns, um, when we're only relying on D-SAL water right now. Um, the other thing, you know, I like to...
Pam, before you go on to that, that was a really good point. Denise, could we, could the city please reach out, um, and ask Edison if there's been any movement on storage? Because that's really what we're waiting for, is storage, so, I, I apologize, I should've asked that question when Jeff was here, and I forgot.
Okay.
Sorry.
But, storage again, it's a permitting issue, it's an equipment, it's a funding issue, it's months away. I mean, that's, so, I'm talking about near-term, the long-term, apparently, there's other things going on that weren't, weren't given to the public, um, that maybe would be helpful for the public to know, to alleviate a lot of concerns that people have. The other thing I wanted to talk about is legal fees. Again, the last warrant list had two months' worth, it was ninety thousand, which is forty-five thousand dollars a month, plus another twenty thousand in litigation fees, which means you're on track for another year of over six hundred thousand dollars in legal fees that the city simply cannot afford. And finally, um, I received, and I'm sure other business owners did too, a letter from the current operator of the Catalina Freight Lines, who, in recognition of the fact that oil prices have tumbled and are continuing to stay low, is lifting the last piece of the surcharge that was imposed on all of us, which will result in about a five percent savings in barge costs for, um, both commercial and residential, I would imagine. And, um, I'd asked the City Council to reach out to the other, um, companies that we rely on who utilize diesel and, um, gas, to see whether there are surcharges that we're still paying, that maybe should be looked at and alleviate some of the costs that we're being charged with. Thank you.
How did you get the, I, I didn't receive anything, how did you, whatever you received...
I don't know if it's because I'm a commercial customer...
Uh, you, if they do any statement billings, they included that letter, as they would closures or information, they, they, CFL does a good job of always sending out, we're gonna be closed a couple of months in advance. This just happened to be a letter that goes with statements or any billings that they would've done, whether, whether you're commercial or private.
And it was posted out of Pebley...
And I, I did spend some time online trying to figure out when the, how much the fuel surcharge, surcharge was on ferry tickets, and I didn't get, the PUC website's very difficult to transfer, so I'm sure you could just send a letter and say, could you give us some information, we're interested. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
In light of Ms. Albers' comments, could we direct a letter to be sent to our state, like, state elective officials to talk to the Division of Drinking Water and help us all? Because it'd be nice to get a little motivation to get those guys off the stick, and...
That's fine with me.
Yeah.
It's fine with me.
Yep.
I, I would note that the agreement that we have with Edison requires that they maximize the D-SAL, uh, production and minimize use on the reservoir as they recharge.
So right now, we're living on D-SAL, but they can't, can't make anymore, no place to put it. Last year, they spilled it.
Not very much. And yes, Allison.
Allison Osinski. Again, I just wanted to bring up the county rec assessment that was done the other day, it was great, and I wanted everyone to notice the number-one thing overwhelmingly was need for a pool and rec center, and I'm again asking, have you done anything to look at land allocation on this issue? That's, that's the stumbling point, we're ready to start the day we have land, and a lot of you promised this was something you were gonna work on during your terms, and I'm asking again that you do something to help identify a land usage that we can get going on that project one of these days. Second item, the kayak storage floats that I've been harping on forever here, I have noted several people have told me that the commercial kayak rental business along, on the way to the mole is not going to be there this summer, and since that seems to be city property, isn't that a good location to simply turn into resident, uh, uh, storage for kayaks? Could somebody please check into that? Same thing too, there's ongoing problem with shoreboat service, I think you're gonna talk about that later, but my request again that you look into simply adding a daily fee to the mooring fees and providing shoreboat service, and also, it's, another summer's coming along, and we still don't have dock carts for the boaters. Could somebody please look into buying dock carts for boaters? And my final item, real quick, uh, I know you guys have been blaming this on Ben, but he promised an answer by March thirty-first, and that's almost a year ago, about personal D-SAL plants, uh, you know, I'm, I'm interested in, uh, doing this, I, I know we all have this forty-three dollar surcharge that we still don't have an answer where that came from, but, you know, I wanna do something proactively about this, I'd like to, you know, I'm, I'm willing to pay my fair share, but I guess I'm tired of, um, you know, forced restrictions because Edison didn't do their job and the PUC didn't make sure Edison did their job. I wanna do something proactively, and I know there are at least twenty other people in town who are on a list waiting to put those plants in. Could somebody please make a decision on that sometime soon, it's been a year delay already. Thank you.
At the next council meeting, could we give an update, because there has been, or just where we are, kind of?
We could give an update, it wouldn't be much of one. Um, it's kind of at a standstill, we've been trying to punt it down the road, we will be reaching out to Edison again, it's all about permits, but I will certainly try to prepare something that...
Or just any, I mean, at least you're telling us something even right there.
And I did have a discussion with Randy Harrell on lands, but it's nothing I can report on, out in the public.
Right.
Um, I wasn't sure about the kayak. Allison, I don't know what you're referring to, kayaks out at, are you talking about the wet spot?
I think at that point, this is hearsay, so, it, it's hearsay, so, I, I, I don't believe that that's true, it may change hands, but going away is, is not factual.
And what's dock carts?
The push carts, like, think of the ones in front of school, love.
Carts, thank you.
Yeah.
Missed that word.
Okay. Okay. Okay, no more oral communications, we'll move to the consent calendar.
There are six items on the consent calendar, but I am pulling item number six, that leaves us with five. There are actions, to approve the actions from the January nineteenth, January twenty-fifth, and February second meetings. There are expenditures for approval, which include warrants, electronic fund transfers and payroll for the amount of one million, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Item three is to adopt the leaves policy, recommended action is to adopt the resolution that implements the city employee leaves policy. Number four is a waterside permit application from Comm Seas and Company, that was on the agenda last time, and I believe, Brian, are they here? Oh, yes. If you have questions, the applicant is in the audience. Number five is the second, um, is to adopt the ordinance, I'm sorry, on Title Six, Chapter Six, and Section eight dash five-point-oh-five of the Avalon Municipal Code relating to public and private saltwater systems.
Okay, is there, what is the wish of the council? Do you wanna, is there motion?
I just wanna ask a question on number four. That doesn't...
Can we pull it?
Can you just pull it?
You wanna pull it?
Pull it.
Move staff on one to three and five.
One second.
One second, comments? Call for the vote. Item number four.
All ayes. I couldn't find my thing.
Are we saving, uh, packet number six, or are you gonna reproduce that?
If, uh, yes, I'll be reproducing it, because we're making some changes.
If we pulled it from the agenda completely.
Completely?
Yeah.
When it's posted again, could somebody please put it on the web version of the City Council packet?
Certainly, it can always come up, Pam, and I can email it to you, too.
No, I think it's actually, the whole point of this resolution is that the public should have access to the salaries that they are paying to people.
Absolutely, that's no problem.
Okay.
Okay, item number four.
This item was held over from the February second meeting, uh, because the applicant was stuck in Utah and unable to, uh, be present, and it was pulled for questions from council.
My only question, my question right now is just, is it, is it gonna be, it's not gonna be bottom cleaning, right? It's just hull cleaning?
Uh, I believe it was top and bottom cleaning, is what the request was, is that correct? Yeah.
Okay. And my only main concern was the environmental impact on the people who are using the harbor. I know this isn't the only business that does bottom cleaning, but I'm, I'm really concerned about how much, you know, environmental chemical pollutants we can put in the harbor without it starting to affect people's health and well-being. That's it.
I mean, the City of Avalon does have a, a cease and desist order, and if, if you wanna strin, make the law, uh, stronger and, and ban that, that's up to the council, but right now, it, it isn't that way. I mean, you can say if you want to have bottom cleaning only outside the bay, instead of out, inside Avalon where the cease and desist, uh, exists, that is an option, too.
If, if, hey Scott, if we were to approve this tonight, and, uh, at a later time, we want to ban bottom cleaning inside of the harbor, can we do that?
You can do that via ordinance, or, 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 yes, yes, you could. You're, you're giving them the license to do it, but you could enact further regulations prohibiting certain types of, um, behaviors or practices that, uh, are shown to violate, uh, environmental laws. And they do have to comply with the best management practices that are within the cease and desist order with this. So, you're granting it to them, but they still have to comply with the cease and desist order and all applicable laws and all regulations that we have. But in the future, if you didn't like this, you could prohibit them from doing it, so...
Yeah, I just wanna say, I'd probably push for that into the future, and, and to cleaning up our harbor even more than it, it already is. I'm, I'm really concerned about people's, people's health and well-being. Um, I know a lot of the chemicals, I'm familiar with some of the chemicals that are in bottom paint, I know they're, they're getting to be a little more, uh, friendly on the environment, but, all the same, I, I just don't think that people's skin and chemicals, um, are a good combination, um, so, if we go ahead and approve this, I just, I wanna say in the future, I'm, I'm gonna start pushing for...
Well, I'm curious when you, because I don't know the cease and desist order from top to bottom or back to front, does it save certain things, like certain chemicals that can be used? I mean, are we using Joy, or are we using, what, what do we use to clean the bottom of a boat?
A scrub brush.
Nothing.
I mean, do we use chemicals at all? It's just, so there's nothing, none of the...
He's talking about the, the chemical, that chip, the paint itself.
The paint itself.
That comes off, which is gonna happen whether a boat is actually clean or not. I mean, that's the whole reason of, you know, painting the bottom of your boat is, over time, the barnacles and, you know, paint, paint does... time, the barnacles and, you know, paint, paint does come off. If a boat hasn't been painted properly, the paint will come off in and of itself as well. So...
And how about the top of a boat? Are they just cleaning that with fresh water? How do you clean a boat?
That's specified in the cease and desist order that before anybody can hose down their boat with the water that they make themselves, not with city water or salt water, that they have to dry clean the bird droppings and other waste before the boat's washed, and they dispose of that in the trash receptacles.
Okay, I agree, paint comes off the boat, but it doesn't come off like when you scrub it, when you agitate it.
Right. Oh, no, she was talking about chemicals, though. So I'm saying that the paint is going to come off.
Not like it's going to come off when you scrub it and you agitate it.
Right. But the chemicals, it's not like they're going there with Lysol they're going.
I'm not getting, I'm not getting wise with you, so I don't, I don't like it when you do that with me, okay? I have a good point that I'm making.
One of my concerns is in item number one, where you're requiring them to go to the washdown dock to do, to perform the service, but that's the only place where you could get city water. So why would we be requiring them to go to the washdown dock to do...
Because that's the only area with, written within the CDO that you can wash a boat, is in that corner over by the washdown dock and the repair barge area.
And so what happens with anybody on any random mooring that wants to wash down their boat? Does harbor go by and ask them to discontinue?
If they're washing down their boat with water going in the bay, yes, they're not supposed to be doing it.
And that's that document that was put together a couple of years ago, Denise? I think you put that one together.
That brochure? That is at the harbor, yes.
So a bigger concern that I had was the overnight accommodations. And I don't know, we don't, I'm not sure if we have anybody here from the planning department, but I would be curious to know, our vacation rentals themselves have some sort of inspection requirement and particular safety rules that they have to follow. Are we not implementing those same types of rules for this type of transient rental?
I think there's a big difference between a house and a boat, and I don't know if there's an inspection for someone that wants to go charter the boat to come over to Catalina and stay on it. I don't know why we would require that somebody starting here.
If you are Brenda Thomas, would you like, would you like to make a statement? Or just come up and let us see your face, your smiling face, and come up to the microphone, please.
Brenda Thomas, mother of four. Anyway, the cleaning product that I am going to use actually...
I'm sorry, and please speak into the mic.
The cleaning product that I plan to use is actually a spray can and does not actually use any water at all. It was developed in Australia in March of 2006, and it literally is like a clean and wax product. And like Brian said, any type of bird droppings or things, it would be significant that you would have to do a dry wipe. So we're going to use microfiber. And any type of washdown or use of water is literally a system that we're kind of using that's going to be in a five gallon bucket. We're going to use two, not more than probably two gallons. And we're going to be putting fouled water in one bucket, clean water in another. It's going to be very contained. We're going to put the fouled water with the lid, you know, just like the Home Depot painters. And it's, it's very environmentally friendly. The product that we're using has no Teflons, no silicones, no CFCs. And it's won an award in 2008 for being a watermark for saving water. You know, it's a product that was championed for saving water for cleaning purposes for gel coat, stainless steel, windows. So it's a perfect product for this application, and I'm doing it to help my boys learn the value of a dollar in getting into a small business in hopes that they can use innovation for bottom cleaning. We're doing before and after GoPro films. We're using GoPro as a before and after filming process. So if people are interested in what kind of fouling of the water or disruption of the water during that cleaning, that would be, you know, available for people to see. And so we're trying to make it just a very transparent business that will provide a service that we feel like is something that people would, would like here in the harbor. So...
Great.
Yeah, supplemental.
Is this like a bed and breakfast on the ocean?
Yeah. No, we're not going to serve them breakfast. They'll have to get that on their own. But it is just a, like I said, a very transparent way for me to have guests on a boat that I've had in the harbor on a daily basis since March, I think, ninth of last year. I've actually been here since December, but I was on and off the island. So consecutive time with the Com Seas. It's a 30-foot power sport cruiser. It sleeps six, but probably four comfortably. You know, it's a 1989 Tally craft. It's kind of a nostalgic, I don't know, hillbilly camper on the water. I don't know. It's a...
Sounds like a good idea.
Sounds fun.
So...
Okay. No more questions?
I would just add one thing, that if, in fact, they're going to be discharging the dirty water into our system, that they would need to make sure they have the appropriate permits for that.
Okay. And I don't, I'll have to talk to you about that or...
What was your plan for disposing the water?
You know, when I do my own boat, I just literally dump it in the toilet, you know, water, you know, as a, so it's not going, I'm not dumping it in the, you know. And it's, like I said, it's, it's literally, I keep it under what you can actually carry comfortably, and that's, you know, a gallon is eight pounds, so we're talking about two buckets. And it's no more than two and a half, two and a half gallons. It's just, if you're going to be conservative and try to be water-wise with no water, then you do need a little. That's ridiculous to think you're going to clean something up with no water. But it could be two gallons of water that you, you know, the spring, 99, spring water in the gallons that you get. It's just that you want to keep it contained and be able to close it off and remove it from the harbor in a safe way, and that's the way we've really decided to do it.
Okay, I think, I don't, you may not need one, but Dennis H., right, the gentleman there, he's in charge of our discharge permit, so he can help you out there. All right, Dennis.
Is this rated like a, does she get taxed like a transient occupancy tax for this?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, 12%, I understand, the 12%.
12% tax.
12 plus seven for harbor use fee?
I think it's just 12. I don't know if you tack the other harbor use fee.
For cleaning.
Done with the same situation that we have a waterside permit currently like that. It's 7% for the waterside permit, but if they have overnight guests, it's the higher of the two. It's the 12%. It's not both.
Move staff on item four.
Wait, wait. Sorry. We have a question from the audience.
Oh, okay.
A lot of things on the agenda tonight, sorry. I want to speak highly in favor of this one. This is something as a boater, and I know most of you are not, but this is something we desperately need in this harbor. I've talked again about how unfriendly this harbor is to boaters. This is something we desperately need. Not everyone has D-Sol, by the way, on those boats, so I don't know where they're going to get this fresh water from. But the need for frequent cleaning is important. The more often you clean, the less damage there is, the less chemicals are going to go in there. Last summer, I begged people to clean the bottom of my boat. It was outrageously expensive to find somebody to do it because we have a lack of competition here. Just to let you know, in San Diego, I pay $47 a month or every three weeks in the summer for bottom cleaning. Here in Avalon Harbor, I pay $248 for the same service, 10 times as much. I mean, it's just ridiculous. By the way, the damage to my boat at the end of the season from having kept it here in Catalina and then had to have the maintenance done when I got back to San Diego in the fall, cost me over $9,000 because I couldn't get regular maintenance done here. This is something that's desperately needed. By the way, we already have numerous colleges, commercial programs, charters that are bringing people over here every single weekend, and they're living on those boats and staying on it. That's something that's already occurring. It's nothing new. And by the way, all the gray water from everybody's boat in the harbor is going into the harbor. Only sewage doesn't. Small amounts from cleaning aren't going to make a bit of difference. It's not any different than us doing our pots and pans on the boat and getting that gray water into the harbor. This is something that's needed. It's normal boating. She's not asking for anything unusual, and it's something that I highly encourage you to do because we need it desperately.
Great. Thank you. Well, if we approve this, be sure to give Allison your business card.
Hand brochures to hand out.
Okay, there's no further comments?
We need a second first.
I need, I'll second that.
Moved in second, and call for the vote. Congratulations. Okay, item number seven.
General business. Item number seven is request for proposals for the shoreboat services. This came to council on January 19th, and we came back now with the RFP for your review, which you requested. Brian Bray has worked with Best, Bestin, Krieger on this, so I'm going to let him take
I called Harbor Master Bray and got some of my questions answered today, but go ahead, folks, because you always come up with such good ones.
We got a letter from Mr. Stickler emailed tonight about 6:11. Did you get a copy of it?
I didn't see it, no, only...
Can we have it? It was emailed, you said?
Yes, it was emailed.
At what time?
6:11. We were here.
We were here.
That's okay, we've been here since 5:00. So even if he sent it at 5:00, we were in session.
Can you get one of Mr. Brian?
Brian, did I get one?
No. I just wondered if Mr. Harbor Master Bray had any comments on that letter.
Item one states that they would be, still want to put their summer float infrastructure in place to operate their glass bottom boats. And then you flip down to item number three, and it says if they're not awarded the service, they'll still intend to continue operating the shoreboat service and the tour operation. And they will not operate when revenues can't sustain the service. And I think that's what's gotten us to the RFP process. I mean, they want to run when there's money to be made, but don't want to run, you know, when the money isn't coming through. And that's where I'm at a loss of how we're going to get the service to run.
Yeah, so item one was what I asked you today when we spoke about if somebody else was given the bid, would their float have to leave? And you had said yes. Under just initial reaction, or initial, right?
Well, yeah, when a new operator comes in, he's got to have a spot to operate, and they need to have their float where the current float is now. And that was a, to the best of my recollection, a separate mooring and float agreement that went along with the contract. And it was able to house its sister companies, which were the adventure tours.
And I don't understand, number three, if we are not awarded a service, please note that we intend to continue operating a service. I don't, I don't get that. Haley, you want to explain that?
Sorry.
Thank you.
I was just told about this today, so I'm very sorry. My name's Haley Sickler. I'm with Island Enterprises. I live on Metropole. So the service, if this is going to be going out for a proposal, we would like to bid on it. Our intention, though, is we are not shutting down shoreboat service. We didn't have an intention of shutting down shoreboat service. Yes, we do want to run a limited schedule, which, over a year of dialogue with the city and the previous city manager, there was discussion about running a limited service because we no longer had that subsidy, which was the cruise ship tender contract. We were, we had applied for a loan, as you read in the letter, that we were granted, and we got to kind of cover that gap for the year and a half that we haven't had the tender service. But during the winter months, it's very difficult to sustain a shoreboat service business.
If this is a personal question, I should not...
That's okay.
Personal question, but... Have you, has the company actually sold some of their shoreboats?
We actually have them up for sale.
Up for sale?
Yes. Yeah, we're currently only running two, or have two that are going to be in the harbor.
Any other questions of Haley?
Not yet, but I have a question for Harbor Master.
Yes.
It's my understanding that the new contract whoever is awarded to would be, would that be the franchise agreement? So they would be provided the sole ability to operate?
That, you'd have to talk to the city attorney's office, the language, whether it be a franchise or a contract, or, you know, sole source of one...
It's intended that we would terminate, we're operating now on a kind of like a month-to-month basis with the, under the old agreement. And if this is awarded, we're only going to have one shoreboat service.
So essentially, if we awarded the contract to someone else, you would then prohibit them from providing service?
Correct.
No, so I think, I think you defined our, if you were awarded, if you were not awarded a service...
They still want to continue, but the agreement wouldn't allow for that.
So you're shutting it down?
I guess my other concern would be if another provider were to come in, obviously the harbor can't handle two additional floats, or could it at the end of the pier?
I think we're maxed, you know, we could look at it, but I think we're maxed with a 60-foot city float and an 80-foot float of Island Enterprises attached to that 60-foot float, so that's 140 feet out off the end of the pier. If you add another float to that, you know, you're, you know, a couple hundred feet out in front of the pier, and that really cuts down the fairway.
They can't, they can't share that float, then? Are they maxed out? I mean, if, you know... I mean, if, you know, are we talking about two companies operating out there now? Or is that something that's out of the question?
Well, ultimately, it's sort of the council to decide, but it's the intention that we'd go out to RFP for a shoreboat service contract, and one company would be doing the shoreboat services.
And right now, do the shoreboats ever pull up to our float?
Yeah. I mean, right now, during the wintertime, they have two floats there that they have...
Oh, yeah, because their things go.
The ability to use one with their glass-bottomed boats, and they use one with their shoreboats. But if it's out of service, you know, they pull up to city docks.
Could someone, well, I'm just thinking of alternatives, could some, if Stickler didn't happen to get this, could they rent space for those shoreboats so they wouldn't have to go out and get, bring another whole dock in, and everybody still operate?
It would be, I would say it would be difficult. I mean, during summertime, they utilize their dock, and we utilize all of our docks. I mean, it's not somebody that's coming in once in the morning and once in the afternoon. They're there every, you know, 10 or 15 minutes.
And I wouldn't want, personally, wouldn't want the liability of another operator operating off my floats.
That would be...
Yeah. But I have a more basic issue with the RFP. One of the reasons I think the shoreboats been losing as much money as they've been losing has been operating under a schedule of hours that is not efficient, to put it nicely. The schedule that Brian has laid out has about 5,700 hours a year, which equates to about $120,000 payroll, which, as I understand, is about half the fare box. So you've got the other $120,000 for vessel maintenance insurance, fuel, city fees, all that other sundry stuff. And I think if we issue the RFP as it says, I think we're setting ourselves up to fail because if someone responds to it the way it's written, they're going to be back in about a year and say, "I can't afford to do this." I would rather put the RFP out without the level of service hours in it. Let the RFP respondents propose what hours of service they'll operate during the year. And if we get one or two responses, we can pick the one we think's best.
Well, my only concern with that, Ollie, is that you've got tour operators in the harbor that are relying on the ability to get to their boat to be able to provide the tours that they're, that they're selling at any given, given time. So if you've got a tour that you sold for 8 o'clock, you need to get out to your vessel, get yourself prepared to be able to pick up your guests by the time of the tour. So then you're altering potentially everyone else's schedule.
I think, I think if you have a boat in the harbor and you want to provide daily service, you can put a dinghy on our recratted dinghy dock. The other company does it that way.
But see, that's also a part of what I think has gotten us into this, is that we're encouraging more and more people to use their own boats, which is taking away from, from the service. And I don't know, I've not received any statistics from, from them regarding how, if the numbers have dropped off over the years or if they've increased. So I don't know that that's actually true or not, but, I mean, it seems like...
But maybe that's why everybody's using the dinghies now, because it's too expensive to take the boats. Maybe that's why we're getting congested on the docks.
I haven't heard a complaint that the shoreboat's too expensive. I mean, if one person, it's five bucks, but if you get four people, it's 20. So then it gets expensive, but then you, you know, it's looked at trying to add a fee into the mooring fee. Well, that works good for somebody that's here for one or two days, but that doesn't work good for somebody who leaves their boat here, you know, on a monthly basis. Is, you know, something that's $31 a day right now, if you add 45% to it to put a subsidy in there, you know, now you're looking at, you know, was it $47 a night or something for something that you're paying 31 for, and you don't use the shoreboat service?
Have we had an increase in dinghies to now?
I mean, if you build a dock, they will come. So, I mean, we've maxed out where we can put dinghy docks, and, you know, they fill them up.
So, so if I were going to fill this out for myself, under your plan scenario, and I'd say, "Okay, well, I'm going to, about 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock, it dies down, so I don't want to run anymore." If we find that we did that scenario and we got whatever we got, can we then say, "Okay, but if I'm a, then I can be a Uber driver on the water, then?" So if the official shoreboat service is only till 8 or 9 o'clock at night, and we're going, "But we need something till 2," would we then encourage if someone was industrious enough that had a little mooring, that wanted to just run a late-night shoreboat service, outside of this, they could do that?
So I've got a Coast Guard license.
Well, if you're under so many passengers, you don't need it. If you're sick.
You still need a Coast Guard license.
You still need it.
Oh, okay, still, okay, okay, so I guess...
Well, if they have the licenses, yes, that could. You could have an exclusive shoreboat agreement for between the hours of X and Y.
Right.
And then outside of that, if someone had the appropriate licenses, you could allow them, by issuing a waterside permit, you know, in a non-exclusive shoreboat for the shoulder time.
And that person's only going to be there if there's money to be made. And if there's money to be made, that shoreboat service is going to be operating.
That's the crux of the issue, is that, you know, they've, they made money this weekend, they lost money the weekend before. It's, we've got to look at the shoreboat as, what is it? Is it a business? Is it a necessary service? I mean, if you call it a necessary service, we're lopping 7% on top of the shoreboat fees for the harbor use fee. We're selling fuel at significantly above our cost. We're collecting mooring fees from them.
Let's go back to significantly above our costs.
Well, above our costs.
We, we sell fuel at our cost. It is not a for-profit fuel dock. If we could sell 500,000 gallons a year, we could lower the price. But when you have set costs and...
But if, if we looked at fuel as a service to the harbor, we wouldn't have set costs associated. We have the cost of gas. We incorporate the cost of pumping, it's like we do with our harbor patrolman. It's part of, it's part of providing the service. I mean, it's just, it's a different business model look at. And I think one of the things I think we encouraged Jeff and the city manager to talk about was what would be a more efficient way of doing this. And Jeff, in his infinite wisdom, came up with, I think, a $600,000 subsidy. We can't afford a $600,000 subsidy. I think we all agree with that. But I think we, maybe you can find some happy ground in the middle someplace. I think one of the places you start is you let the operator tell us what hours they want to operate, and we try to fill the void however we can, or we kind of find out where else we can come up with more money. Because if we didn't, we don't have shoreboat services, I know that we're going to, next August, the restaurant's going to come into town and just breathe down our neck because people got to go to shore. And I think we just got to find a creative way of looking at this so that we can get, continue to have shoreboats provided by somebody in Avalon Harbor.
So you're potentially saying, allow the proposal to come in with the hours that they want to operate? And if it doesn't fit within our box, then allow someone else to come in and finish off the excess hours?
That was my little...
That's, I don't think you're, I don't think we want to have a shoreboat in January between the hours 8 o'clock and 10 o'clock. Because you don't need a shoreboat between the hours of 8 o'clock and 10 o'clock on midweek during January.
And that's why it says, January 1st to May 31st, 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night.
Well, that's right, 8:00. But that might be too, that might be excessive. It's just, I know that, I have experienced being down at the other end of the island, which is a lot slower in the wintertime than Avalon is, but we would close our whole harbor operations at 5:00 during the week.
What if we do have two different carriers coming in and allow them to work out exactly the overlapping schedule so they could both maybe absorb some of the losses together? I mean, we change, basically change our RFP or consider it between two shoreboat companies, and maybe the Uber idea that, boat Uber that Annie had, because we're going to have to think outside of the box here and...
Well, if they were, if, I think in your plan, and I could be wrong, Joe, I think I understand, but I think then the pie is split up more, the thing that they would probably do is go in on an RFP together and not do two separate RFPs and try to make them work. It would be like, you know...
And then have them both do it and then rotate, rotate the times.
But we, but then we only have, we have five moorings they can go on, right? Is that what the RFP says? We have five moorings available? Were they for the 1,200...
That's currently leased to the local shoreboat company.
Okay.
That's currently what is leased to the local shoreboat company.
Okay, and that's what you've also put in here that would be available?
Correct. But, you know, I don't think somebody's going to want to pick up someone else's trash. I mean, somebody's going to want to make money at it or pay for the service that they're out there trying to do, you know, second person. We've had two shoreboat companies in the past. And if one's having a hard time, I don't know how two of them are going to make it.
Right. Yeah, no, I understand that.
And the problem with having two is you've got the capital. Somebody's got to go out and buy the boats.
Or lease them.
Or lease them. So that would be my recommendation, is we let the...
In the time that they're not running, then that leaves it on the harbor department to transport those people because they need to get back and forth to their boats. And we do that, we need the correct equipment to do it.
Right.
Maybe we should buy one of their boats. Because going on that harbor, harbor boat's kind of an experience, right? Getting up and down.
Correct.
And it's a liability to the city.
And their boats, what they've offered them to us at, you know, they're, it's, you might want to rethink their boats and just look at other boats.
Or another boat, yeah, cheaper boat. Because I thought, remember last time you said that their boats were in good shape last time?
They are, but, I mean, they're, some of them are from 1969, and the price tag on them is, you know, a 2010 price tag.
Maybe shop around or lease one.
If I could suggest a compromise between the harbor department and the city council would be to have the proposal be for, one, they, they can, they give us two proposals. One with the hours set forth in the current RFP. And then the other is, if there are no hours, what, you know, what is the pricing in terms of your proposal? And then we can evaluate both options when we, when the RFPs come in. And that way, everyone's happy, I think.
Okay. What was the, what was the previous contract term for?
There was a five-year term with, I believe, a five-year option.
Okay. So that's one of your questions, is what would the terms be? And it seems appropriate to do the same thing?
I think it was a five-year option because of the capital outlay that they were doing with revamping equipment.
But with the price of equipment now, is that, is that realistic?
I didn't hear your question.
I mean, if, if you're, I don't know how much you, if I started this new, how much I would be invested? I would at least three vehicles, three boats, probably. And so whatever that investment is, plus I have to make a float, I have to build a float, and we talked about that being maybe $150,000. So, I mean, so you could have $750,000 into this if we were starting up fresh, easy. So is that worth five and five?
For a 10-year, a five-year extension?
Right.
Which would be consistent with our city leases in general.
Yeah, yeah. For that amount of money, I would say...
I'd be good with that.
Sounds good.
Okay, 10 and a 5.
And then is there a fee for, sorry, is there a fee for the float at the end of the pier? Or is that just part of, like, you get that?
No, it was a float agreement that was, was written into the franchise document. So there was no fee that went along with it, but they paid a hefty franchise fee each year.
And they do their own maintenance and upkeep?
They store it, they do their own maintenance, and, you know, it's probably $30,000 a year.
And then you've got, on item number four, excuse me, section D, item number four, the general information and requirements, you, item number four says, "Mechanical means of answering may be provided, but messages must be checked at frequent intervals." Could we add "and responded to"? Check and responded to at frequent intervals?
Wouldn't they want to because it's...
Well, because I check my voicemail all day long, but it doesn't mean I have to respond to it.
Oh, okay.
Just as a standard.
Is that section four, number seven?
No, it's, it's, it's on page three.
Yeah, section D, item four.
It's repeated again on page eight, section four, number seven.
Seven, eight, section four, where?
Page eight, number seven.
Okay.
He said "and responded to."
Or answered.
All right, it's just something that, I mean, okay. And then, so I'm, I'm just fumbling a little bit because we received, at some point, we've received some documentation that was in closed session. And I think a lot of my questions have to do with the confidential information that was provided, so that carries over to this, correct?
Yes, but I don't recall.
All right. So I can't really ask the rest of my questions.
So I'll direct staff, direct staff to make the proposed changes to the RFP. And you want to see it again, or you want to issue it?
I say issue it and move forward.
Before we do that, we're asking for a deadline on submittals to whether we want to go out four weeks, six weeks.
What's standard, about four weeks?
No, that's not, not for, I would say, I'd say six to eight weeks is standard for something this substantial, yes.
So because, okay, what we'll have, okay, let's say that's six to eight weeks, and we don't, do we have a written agreement with the changes that we're doing right now with them? Or is it just a handshake?
Their contract just carries on, but the, I mean, they've put us on notice that they're only going to run certain days.
So do we know, do we have in writing when because of, because the season is going to come upon us before this is done, it seems like? Is there something that says, "Okay, and as of March something, they'll increase," or is there, Haley?
Uh, sorry. I do speak very loud, so I'll leave this specifically. We do have a PUC tariff that tells what our schedule is. Typically, our high season is from April to October, and then October to April. So this limited schedule that we were thinking about doing, it would pick back up once April rolled around. Usually, we pick up right around spring break.
Okay.
That's about our time. Yeah. Is that all you have?
Yeah, that answered my question. Thank you. Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, do you have one more?
Another question?
Go ahead. Please.
I think there were a lot of things on the topics this week. Again, I think most of you are not boaters, and you don't get this. This is a service that has to be provided here. I've challenged all of you to come for dinghy rides with me in July, and not one of you has taken me up on that. It's ridiculous you can't get to those dinghy docks. Most people, because of the damage and the cost, don't want to use their dinghies. They're using a shoreboat service, which is outrageously expensive. Just so you know, it doesn't sound like a lot at $5 a trip, but when my crews are here in the summer and I've got eight people on that boat, that costs me $240 a day for shoreboat rides, which is crazy. Okay, it's a service that must be provided. I still would encourage you heavily to look at providing this as a service. Raise the rate for the daily usage of the harbor and include shoreboat rides in it. You know, I know it would, it would raise the cost, but right now, we are paying more at two harbors than here. I'm paying $11 more a night at two harbors than I pay in Avalon Harbor. If it included shoreboat rides for myself and my crew, I'd gladly pay that extra $11 a night. It would absolutely be worth it. It's something that most boaters, given the choice, if they didn't have to put a dinghy in the water, if they didn't have to buy a dinghy in the first place. By the way, the cheapest dinghy at West Marine that I could buy and put a two-horsepower motor on it these days would cost me $4,000. These super dinghies that people are pulling up with are in the $40,000 range. They're spending a lot of money that they wouldn't spend and would instead pay the city to provide that shoreboat service. So I'd still encourage you to please, before you put this out... So I'd still encourage you to please, before you put this out for bid, look at providing this as a service, even if you have to subsidize it. Right now, you're right, we're forcing Sweet William to take us out there in the harbor patrol boats, which aren't set up for this. But you have to provide the service year round. Of course, it's better in the summer than it is in the off years, or off season, but people need it year round, they need it early in the morning, they need it late at night if they're, they're staying in town for, for dinner. You know, remember, every time people come to shore, they're spending money here. You want to get the boaters off their boats and to shore. So you want to make this an easy service that's affordable and people will use it and come back and forth several times a day. So please, please continue to look into this as a service, not, not just something that's a cost. And competition is good, you know, if it'll bring the price down, I'd be happier for that too, but I'd rather see the service provided by the city. And by the way, why don't we use that tuna club float? It's not being used.
Wait, Allison, I have a question. Do, do you happen to know what, what, if and what Two Harbors charges for shoreboat service?
Uh, in the winter, it's free totally. I never pay them when I get a ride in the winter. And by the way, I've called them at four in the morning and they do run twenty-four hours a day, even if they don't have regular hours. Uh, in the summer, because they have the West End Cruising Club, which now everybody who's got a mooring at Two Harbors is automatically going to be a member of the West End Cruising Club, you get free shoreboat rides. That's part of your fee for being in the cruising club.
For that, but do they charge the, the day-to-day guests, do you know?
Yes, they do.
They do, okay. Do you, you happen to know what that is? I'd certainly check myself, but.
Yeah, I'm not positive, so I guess I don't want to say, and because it doesn't apply in the off season.
Well, I think this is a, oh, please, no, not at all.
Um, just a couple of quick things, I know that I didn't read the letter out loud, um, which I was originally asked to do, but I didn't. Um, yes, shoreboat fares are high, and although Brian may have not heard complaints, I have multiple times. Um, I get to be around the boats all the time. Um, our fuel costs are expensive here. Uh, there are other business operations that are taking their vessels over town, cause it's cheaper to buy fuel over town, drive all the way over, fuel and drive all the way back. Um, but we continue to fuel here in Avalon. And, um, like I said, you know, with the giving away of the tender contract or us not getting it. Again, uh, it going to an outside company that's not getting fuel here in town, that's loss of revenue for the city as well. Um, our limited schedule was based on meetings with the city manager previously, again, before he was fired. After he was fired, we haven't heard from the city since about it. Uh, now we have an RFP out. So, um, the float not only is for the shoreboat service, um, we did talk, because I knew there were gonna be curveball questions tonight, about if there was another service. Whether or not we would be willing to maybe lease out part of the float or allow them to use part of the float, and that is definitely an option, something that we can discuss. Um, but that float does allow us to run both of our tour boats off of. Uh, one of those tour boats being extremely large, heavy, two hundred and three thousand pound semi-submarine. That when a float at the end of the pier is on, it is nearly impossible to land anywhere except for that float. Uh, we can land at float four and five, but that would limit our schedule because of the congestion with parasail boats, the coastal tours, and the Catalina Express. And now on Mondays and Tuesdays, the tender boats. So that would be asking us to cut down our revenue as well in the tours, which right now is what is allowing us to provide the service of shoreboats. Uh, that is it.
Right, thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not gonna be facetious, but this is gonna sound so. When I hear Allison talking about, I mean, the, the thing is, I don't know, when she says look into this, I'm, I'm thinking, this is a perfect poll for John King. You know, ask, get the, get the, get the list of shoreboat people, of all the people that come to the island and have, have their own little boats and whatever. And, you know, what are you willing to pay? Did it, I mean, it would be nice to, and maybe, maybe Brian has this information, but it would be kind of nice to hear what the boaters say. We only have one in the audience, which I don't mean to say only, but, um, and, and I think we could, I, I don't know that we, why we couldn't even do something like this simultaneously. Put the RFP out there, because we're, just because we get up answers, and it doesn't mean we have to move on them. So I don't know, it seems like we don't have enough boater, I don't have boater feedback, and I don't know how helpful that would be.
Well, one of the, one of the logistics of this is the timing, because your daily mooring fees, you go through prop two eighteen fees, and then you've got the annual contracts that go out in December. So if you want to tweak one of those, you've only have a couple opportunities to do it, and we don't have any opportunities this year for it. We skip those opportunities.
Well, I'm, I just, I totally missed that.
Okay, we, we, the harbor fees, the daily ones, the two, two eighteen fees, we established when we had the two eighteen hearings. And then the, the other half of the harbor, which is the leases, you know, the annual permits, they go out in the end of December. And so if you were to look at some sort of increase on either of those, you could increase the, you could increase the two eighteen fees this year. You could increase the annual permits starting January of next year.
And what would be wrong with that?
Um, if the fact that they don't have the subsidy, if they need a six hundred thousand dollar subsidy, it's not gonna be in place this year.
Well, if we're doing it now the way we're doing it, with, on your limited winter, and then you're kicking up on summer, you're still losing money?
We are able to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We are able to sustain during the summertime, but not pull one hundred percent through the winter with the large schedule that we were running before. Um, the cruise ship contract was what allowed us to provide service to everyone in Avalon Harbor through the entire year. Um, now, like I said, summer's the only thing that's really sustaining the business. Uh, the tours are actually what is kicking in to help subsidize, so to say, for the wintertime. Yeah. And our schedule right now, I believe, um, we're doing the weekends, those are the most congested, and then, um, when Dave Howell is around, uh, Brian can call him too. If it seems to get very crowded in the harbor as well, and we'll start a shoreboat up whenever.
Right.
Yeah, but if not, just like Ollie said, we're sitting around for twelve hours a day, granted, between two different operators. But, um, we're sitting around for twelve hours a day waiting for one person, generally out at Frog Rock.
It's true.
It is. So that's, that's pretty much it.
So, okay.
I think we should, I think what we should do is should issue both of the RFPs, and I think we should also continue to explore the concept of coming up with some sort of subsidy for the shoreboats on a ongoing permanent basis. I just don't think we have enough information right now to do that, but we can get the RFPs out there and find out what's out floating around.
But I also think we should be going in parallel lines and trying to find out what the boaters out there are willing to do. And that's a little survey that we can put on, I mean, you have access to, I think, Brian, you have access to all those people somehow, don't you? The majority of the, at least the regu, the, hold on, go regulars?
We have emailing lists for the mooring owners and we have a list where twelve hundred people have signed up to know when a mooring's become available for sale. And we can put something in the log newspaper, which is a boater's newspaper here in Southern California.
That would be it.
I think all, all of that simultaneously is important. I, I mean, you know, as, as stewards of public funds, it's difficult for us to just move forward and give a subsidy. And I think that was the, the catalyst for going to the RFP is to find out what's out, you know, is there another provider that could do it? And if not, then we should, that parallel path should be to continue the, the conversation of what would work for, for you guys. Um, but to give a six hundred thousand dollar subsidy is a massive amount of money of taxpayers' dollars that we would really need to answer to. And then looking into that would be what, why, what are your operations? Um, you know, what are your revenues? All of that is, is fairly private information for you guys, but, um, I, I think only you're on to it with issue the two RFPs. Then continue the conversation simultaneously and we, maybe we could, I, perhaps it should be the city with this information. Talk to additional boaters and get a feel for.
And again, John King is a good.
Right, but, but his, you know, he, Brian doesn't have the right to give him all of the email addresses and Brian has the voting community.
No, 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 just to put the questions together too. He's, he's very good at putting questions together, but I'm, I'm sure Brian is as well.
And remember, it's gonna be one RFP with two options.
One RFP with two options, yeah.
And just to clarify, we do not share our email list.
With anybody.
That's what I said, yeah.
Yes.
No, I know, I, I didn't. Okay. Okay, well, is, we, we need to make a motion on that or just do it? Or we did it?
He did it.
We did it, we're done, okay.
My seconded it, motion's on the table.
Okay. And let's call for the vote.
All eyes.
I think that is it, so we'll adjourn this meeting.
And then can I, can I just say, I didn't want to say this as part of the topic, but afterwards, um, I, could, Denise, could you please work with Brian to continue those conversations?
With Mr. Stickler, yes, I, just for the record, I did have a long conversation with Mr. Howell. He came into my office and we spoke.
Okay, great.
Two weeks ago.
Great, thank you.
I apologize to Mr. Stickler.
Okay, item number eight.
You're up, Dennis.
Can we, oh, we don't have an item, that's why.
You, you, Dennis put it on the dais before the meeting started.
So we didn't have an opportunity to review it ahead of time.
No, cause it's an item of discussion, he's going through slide by slide for you.
Slide by slide.
Pretty fancy, I might add.
Uh, Dennis didn't do this.
Oh, me and my staff are pretty technical.
You're a, what a team.
Thank you, Ray. Uh, we were this close to, uh, putting the e-buses in finally after two years of investigations. And then, uh, at a previous city council meeting, uh, we, we were directed to find some alternatives. So, uh, what I did here is a brief history of what has transpired and simple, uh, locations that we have considered. And, uh, I'll go through them as briefly as possible. We have costs listed at each, here's site option number one, which is behind City Hall. Remember, we have three e-buses and two chargers. So two e-buses will be charged when they go out, the third e-bus will be charging, because we only have two chargers. Chargers are expensive. I also want to add that we need to act swiftly on this. As I started when I got up here, uh, we were real close to putting it here at position number one, option number one. Um, Audra's telling me that, that we need to act quickly. We have some grant funds that are in jeopardy, and we're talking like April, so we need to get going. Site option one, the estimate there is about thirty-five thousand dollars for the work. I don't know if the financial, uh, we have forty thousand or forty-five thousand budgeted for fifteen, sixteen for it. We have some for fourteen that we didn't use, so this is within budget, but it's behind City Hall. Here's the pros and the cons, as you can see. Um, the cons are, uh, no, no more parking for employees, we need a transformer, the chargers create noise. The buses have to either back in or, or head in, so meaning that they're gonna be backing out close to five corners. It's not really that, that nice. And we have to construct a concrete pad or something to reinforce the, the buses themselves.
And when you say chargers create noise, are we talking hums or what do we got?
They do. Um, we're trying to get up to, um, Santa Barbara to do a decibel reading on them, and hopefully our mechanics are gonna go up there next week.
Okay. It's out of place with the architecture too of the area as well.
Yeah.
Very out of place.
You know, it's a possibility, uh, councilman, that we might be able to enclose them, but, uh, we'll see. They need air, these charges, I'm not sure.
I don't see any other alternative besides enclosing them. There, there's just a couple million dollars worth of buses and we're gonna need, um, our mechanics to be able to work on them in a very safe and controlled environment. It can't be out in the open on a concrete slab. It's, this is hi, this, this is really high voltage, extremely dangerous.
Yeah.
And it has to be enclosed.
The chargers?
The chargers and the buses and where they're gonna be worked on, we're gonna have to jack them up. They're gonna be, on a regular basis, they're gonna have to be lifted up every ninety days to be, to be inspected underneath. There's no way, we can ask our mechanics to do this work unless it's a controlled facility. And it's, it's high tech, it's got, but we've got some ideas about this too, so.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll continue, let you continue with your presentation, but.
Okay.
I did go up to the city warehouse and talk to the mechanics and the people that are in charge up there, and, and they're willing to work with us and come up with some bids on, um, an enclosed facility. And, um, something that is way more safe and, and way more, way more spacious. Cause we're not, it's, it, fire trucks actually might also be able to be worked on as well, and if we can get this facility built somewhere. Um, a, a, a pre-constructive, a, a prefabricated warehouse, metal warehouse is, is what we're talking about, that you actually build onto a slab, so. Um, that's where we're going, that's where, where my thought process is going with the staff, that is, that the guys that are gonna be working on these buses and keeping them on the road, so. But I appreciate all this information and I really, I would like to hear you, Al.
Yeah, well, we're gonna go through, I have nine sites here for you to consider. There's no monies, uh, allocated for any enclosure of the buses themselves. I know that you and I spoke about it, it's a great idea to do it, but I, I haven't got prices on enclosures yet. But it's, we, we're gonna need it. Site number two, this is Kid Ventures. Uh, we'd already spent money for design. Uh, we can pull the e-buses in there and set the, um, chargers, or we have access issues in and out. Uh, the turning radius is bad, we needed a little more land to actually make a turn so we could head out. Uh, I'll let you all read your own pros and cons there, I'll try to speed up this presentation as best I can. The costs involved there are a little over thirty thousand dollars. That's site option number two. Uh, the good thing about this is we own the land, as well as site option number one. Site option three, this is right to my left, right here, along Avalon Canyon Road. We have to take out the palm trees, fencing, construct concrete driveway in and out. We have, um, a transformer that you can barely see right back there by the wooden fence, so the electricity's close. This again is gonna be out in the open. Uh, the good thing about it is it's city-owned. So we could build it there, and there's some cost estimates there of almost forty thousand dollars. These are rough estimates, I haven't got confirmation from Edison, but they're real close. This is site option three. All right, uh, from here on out are locations that we don't own. They're, uh, island companies' property. This is a field of dreams, uh, back by the horseshoe pits, this would be a perfect location. Great access in and out, close to a transformer. Only problem is we don't own the land. Have to work out something with the island company. I think the estimate of thirty-eight thousand might be a hair high. Uh, I'm conservative on the costs, this would be a great spot. Uh, we could even put in, uh, a nice, um, building like you were talking about at this location, councilman. But our problem is, of course, the land. Site option five. I forgot to check with Denise, uh, this is inside our warehouse. We rent this property, is that correct?
Is this the Public Works Warehouse?
Yes, Public Works Warehouse.
The lower one's ours.
Pardon?
That's ours.
Great, okay. Problem is, uh, it's congested. We like to keep that four hundred thousand dollar vector undercover, that's why it's in there. Uh, to the left of, left of it, um, it's a real tight squeeze to back that, uh, the e-bus is in there. And we'd have to find a place for other storage. I had a couple other pictures that show the access issues getting in, in and out of there might be an issue, but it is covered. So it's, uh, it's. So it's an option that you should consider, but we're going to need a lot of room. We need to reconfigure inside. Again, we're going to have the chargers inside and the noise issue. One of the drawbacks is it's uphill. It's past the cemetery and we're going to use charging. Everything till now has been low, low demand. It's been on the flats. Now we're starting on options that have a little more demand of electricity. Option six. One point in time, ex-city manager and I were real close to having an agreement with the island company for this location. It's at their maintenance facility. We didn't... We weren't able to finish the discussions, but it was a possibility that we could get inside of their buildings. Of course, the con is here that it's owned by the island company and that is an issue, as we all know. The bad thing about this is it's relying on Pebbley Beach Road. If in fact El Nino does create any rock falls or anything like that on Pebbley Beach Road and we have to close Pebbley Beach Road, the buses are going to have to go over the hill and the demand on electricity is ridiculous. Option seven is also out in Pebbley Beach Road. That building there is our centrifuge building. Right to the left of that building is a transformer, which is perfect, wonderful electricity. We could put a building there. The drawback is the same as option six. It's out in Pebbley Beach Road, so... And it's uphill. Pebbley Beach Road would be an issue. And the biggest reason that this is an issue is because it's island company property. We own the warehouse, but we don't own the land next to it. Option number eight. This is up Pebbley Beach Road, dump road, whatever we call it. It's real close to the landfill. It's a little lot on the right. It's a perfect location. It needs a concrete pad. The transformer is real close. The drawback is the demand for electricity because it's uphill. And of course, it's owned by the island company. That's the issue there. Option nine, and the last one. These were not in order of precedence, by the way, and I'm sorry to say that, but there's another area next to the fire department. The good thing about this is it's city-owned. I made a statement earlier that that was the last one, but this one is city-owned. However, we don't have as much room there as we do across the street this way. But it can be configured. We can get the buses in there. As far as covering them, I'm not sure how that would work. Electricity is back behind Baywatch, which is to the left in that picture. But the... It is on the flats, low demand, and we own the property.
Are you talking about where those palm trees are?
Yes.
I thought the walkway was... We're going to do a walkway up that side. I mean, we were talking about it, so... But that's one of the proposed areas. We can... Can we get one or two buses in there? Is that what we're talking about? And then maybe two down
Yeah.
on this spot right outside City Hall?
Correct, yeah. I...
Okay.
Real close. I don't think I could fit three in there, Joe.
I appreciate you bringing these options forward because I never even thought of this.
Yeah. I'm sure there's more, but here's nine. And these... We've been looking at these for two years. Two years. And like I said, past management, we were close on negotiations with island company. I don't know what happened and all of a sudden I was directed to put it back here. Now we're on hold. I need you to consider these options. You brought it forward at the last council meeting. And we need to really make a decision here pretty quick. I got to notify Edison. I got to get a work order out. I got to get the electric ordered. We paid for our buses. Our buses are over there in Downey. We paid most of the money for them. They're waiting to be delivered. So we'd like to get them in service. We have an RFP going out to the bus company, transportation service. So I need you to consider this and please consider any other options. If you have any other locations you can think of throughout town, give me a call. We'll run out there and check it out and we can do a quick estimate on it. This is about all that comes up to mind right now.
Can I ask a question, Dennis?
Yes, ma'am.
The one that Councilmember Sampson raised about the maintenance and required work that mechanics will have to do, wouldn't they take the buses up to the garage or do they have to service them wherever they are or can they take them up to the garage?
They could take them up. We have the issue of the demand going up. Now, if they're charged, we're fine. If they break down over here, they're not good. They have to be towed. But we're lacking room up there. We have to go back to the city council. They asked you to buy some special equipment for these buses. We haven't finished buying everything. We need either ramps that they can go up and be worked on underneath. These e-buses are so light. They're built out of aluminum. The frames are aluminum. We can't just jack them up and work on the batteries. They have to be lifted parallel to the ground. So we need devices that will do that. Either one of these areas, well, 60, 70% of these areas of maintenance can be done there if we pour concrete and if we do it right. But they can also be taken up to the public workshop to be worked on, but we need an area there to do it and we need the proper equipment to work on them.
We need a tow truck.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't... We might be able to use one of our maintenance vehicles, but we're talking about a tow truck. It's going to be pretty complex. It's not just towing uphill, it's towing downhill. It's towing a vehicle that is electric. It's got to be... It's got to be disabled. Basically, the drive system has to be disabled before you tow it. It's very complex taking it to Pebbley Beach, especially if our roads are closed. Then that means we'd have to tow it around three palms and then towing it up to the city warehouse. You're towing it uphill and then you're towing it downhill and then you've got to back it up into a cargo bay that you can barely get a vehicle in there without something being towed behind it, so... And I'm taking the advice of the experts that are going to be working on this. And we're still going to take that trip up to Santa Barbara to learn more about these buses and the complexities of the maintenance, but to me, the only place is right out there in the Field of Dreams here. That's the only place we're going to have enough room to do it and to simplify the complicated mess that we're putting our mechanics in if we don't have a facility that's specifically designed for these buses. I mean, I'd like to say, yeah, let's just let's just charge them on the street and then we'll tow them up to the city warehouse when we need to fix them, but we can't do that to these guys. They're already running themselves ragged just trying to keep us in the now with our ramps, with our floats, with our vehicles, with our boats, with everything they have to do with the facilities that we already have to maintain. We actually should probably hire another expert at electric buses to help these guys maintain these. I mean, that's what we're looking at, especially if we don't have the facility to maintain these right off the bat. It's... We've gotten ourselves into a predicament, but we can get ourselves out. I mean, we have a good staff that we can figure this out with, especially if you keep coming up with ideas like this. Synopsises and ideas that might take us to a solution. There's no doubt there's a solution. To me, this is this is just a challenge and we need to find out what the answer to it is.
Yeah, that's why we're bringing it to you. Keep in mind that you're making over a million dollar investment on these e-buses and you're right, we need to take care of them properly and maintain them properly.
Well over a million, probably closer to two after we go ahead and we have our expenses and our new tools and our new things that we need to maintain these buses.
But I also have to stress, I was hit up by Audra before the meeting today that time is of the essence now. We need to make a decision on some of this stuff.
If I could just say one thing
Yes.
on options four, six, seven, and eight. Island company, if we're going to be discussing that for that portion of the discussion, Councilmembers Cassidy and Hernandez cannot be involved in the discussion because that's an... That'd be a direct be a contract with the island company, for at least, so they'd have to recuse themselves. So if you want to...
But I can say something?
Yes.
And they can sit here and listen?
Well, I... If we talk about one, two, three, five, and nine, yes.
If I want to provide direction to Denise to speak to the island company, can I say that?
I would.
Okay, I'm waiting for your answer.
I would say during that portion that it's best to have Councilmembers Hernandez and Cassidy recuse themselves if we're going to be asking, giving direction to the staff to get information from the island company.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we'll recuse them in a minute. Okay, so on this property here, I mean, the two, this one and the fire department one. So if you... Because you need two electric things.
There's three. There's one behind us, option number one.
No, I know, I know, I know. I'm discounting that right now. I'm not going to talk to that one right now. So you said you need two electric stations. So, okay, so one, let's say one is here and two are there, wherever the land is the longest. Okay, but so if you made it so that it could... I guess how does it... Can it actually come in and then where our driveway is, make that turn? I don't think so. Can it? Could it come from the close by this building and we take out the trees and it turns onto the road there?
Like a throughway.
Yes.
Like a throughway.
Could it do that?
We were considering, if you're talking about the option for here.
Yes.
We would be entering, going this way and pulling out.
Oh, in that way?
The buses would go, turn around and head with traffic and pull into an indentation.
Okay, and on the fire department side, which
Same way.
They go like this?
Yeah.
And then?
Fire station, we're going to have to maneuver things. It's less length and less width.
So, I mean, would you envision two here and one there?
We could. We'd have to run twice as much conduit, but it could work.
But she said you had two electric stations, right?
We have two chargers, three buses.
They want to park one and charge two.
Correct.
I'm just concerned about the aesthetics of sticking the e-buses on the side of the building.
We could pay them to look like the side of the building and they'd just blend right in. An extension of City Hall.
They are going to be wrapped nicely, aren't they?
We're changing the wraps on matcha City Hall.
Okay, so, okay, I'm not excited about... Well, I'm not excited about up there because I was up there and talked with Derek and the guys a little bit about that and and that really isn't the site for that and the moving of them and all of that. So I think, to me, that property is ruled out. But I think fire department and City Hall are good. This one, I'm concerned about the back and up. That's kind... If there was a way to go through, but there's not.
There's not.
There's no way to do that?
No. No, unfortunately not. The casitas there that is just... You can't. No.
No. No, see, in Catalina, no.
But if you're, just like you would be coming in to the side here or the fire department, could you, if you were going to come around and pull forward and back in, I mean, that would be happening at a later time than school hours.
Are you talking about site one?
I'm talking about number one.
Yes, it's very possible. I was going to try to check that out today. I didn't get to it, that we could, the buses could back into this area right here and then pull out. It's possible.
Well, no, you missed what I was saying. Just like you're saying for City Hall or the fire department, they would be coming from Avalon Canyon, pulling in this way facing the harbor.
Correct.
So if you, at the end of the day, were to do the same thing, you come down Avalon Canyon, pull forward and then back in, so you're pulling forward to here and backing into there, then you're not backing out into any traffic, so to speak.
Correct, yes. The cons, it says here, need to back in or out. So the way you just explained it was my idea, to have them head out.
Right.
Yeah.
But they still have to back.
Regardless, they still have to stop and back in. Or back out. So it is an issue. And if it's at 8:00 in the morning when the high school's running, that's a problem.
Well, and that corner is just ugly. It's just ugly right there. It's really scary.
Or emergency services are all going out of here. That would be a bummer if we had a a broke-down bus in tow and then we have a fire or an emergency, an ambulance.
Yeah.
It's a scenario that we cannot put ourselves at risk of being caught in the middle of.
Yes, sir.
Even more reason not to put it over by the fire station. That's just... I'm working there.
I'm glad you're all making the decision. This has been very tough for everybody. It's just there's really no ideal place and as I've said up here several times, we need land.
Well, there is an ideal place and we'll figure that out.
Good luck to you.
No, thank you. Thank you for your help on this. I appreciate your help trying to get to this point.
Are any of these places actually just ruled out? Like the parking lot at CKB, is that ruled out?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, these are all...
No, 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 but are we talking about options that are ruling out? Because if we're going to, I mean, so we can, so if we give staff direction, they will know where to look. I mean... Because if you lose parking here for staff, they can go there. They can go to CKB because that's not always packed. And we can encourage people to walk to work.
Well, that's a very good point, for sure.
Or take the bus.
I mean, I'm not as concerned about the staff parking because there is other staff parking, so... I mean, sure, it's nice and convenient. I find it very convenient myself even, but I don't I don't know that that is a reason for us not to do it for that location.
And I guess one of the... Okay, if this is... If you need to tell me to be quiet, I'll be quiet. If I'm talking about money, can I talk about money?
Yes. Money in terms of
Rent?
From the island company? You can, but they have to leave.
Okay, so we'll ask that question in a moment. Let's just ask... Okay, just step out for just a second.
No, I understand what you're saying, Scott, but you know, first of all, I mean, I understand we're not at the point of giving direction, but you know, there's, I believe even members in our audience who would, you know, say option four is taking away from something, would be taking away from something else that we potentially want to do.
No, no, well, and me wanting to have...
You can't say that?
No, we can... Let's just have the... Let's just finish with the general discussion and then just that little bit. You can... The little bit of direction I'll give when you're gone. But yes, if comments from the audience or... You can all see them, correct?
So are...
You're on a roll today, Allison. You liked this meeting, don't you?
Are you me?
I actually, I do want to... I do want to hear from Allison on this because she's been... She's... I know she's got something to say on this one.
As of two weeks ago, a discussion with the island company with Chris Welholm, as they still have not taken that off the bargaining. The Field of Dreams is designed for the pool and we don't want anything else to go there and anything else to even be considered to go there until the island company says absolutely that land is not even a possibility. As of two weeks ago, they told us that's still a possibility. They still have not thought about putting anything else there. They have it in their master plan somewhere that that's the pool and rec center. So please don't. Let's start building chargers on the middle of the swimming pool.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
The ones for... The ones for Pebbley Beach are concerning because, one, the road closures, two, the... So, I mean, is it fair to discuss whether we could just take those options off the table?
I think we can.
The dump road, I mean, we're talking about wastewater treatment.
Those off, yes.
You can't even say that. No, we, again, we should, you can, under the conflict rule, you can segment. So you can talk about the non-island company properties.
We can't talk about road closure, though.
Three of you can.
Okay, all right, so just step out for a moment.
You can discuss.
Councilmembers.
Even though I'm not...
Councilmembers. Cassidy and Hernandez accusing themselves. Cassidy and Hernandez accusing themselves of discussion involving the Island Company from which they...
But we will be able to enter back in to give direction on staff on city property.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so we're not done with the conversation now.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we could discuss option one, two.
Okay, but right now, we're going to discuss four, six, seven, and eight.
We're going to discuss everything that belongs to Island Company.
Okay.
Okay.
Remember, all we need is 1,600 square feet.
How much?
1,600 square feet for the charging stations themselves, for the concrete pad.
Okay, 1,600 square feet for the charging, and that puts three buses on it?
Yeah, I think so. Eighty feet long, 20 feet wide.
Okay. And you're going to need a toolbox. You're going to need a, I mean, we were up there talking and I think you're going to need a little bit more at the site than just that and the buses, don't you? I mean, the people aren't having to go up and down and up and down and up and down, perhaps?
Yeah.
But 16, okay, so I guess one of my directions would be to direct the city manager and whoever else to meet with the Island Company as soon as possible with, and I'm sorry, Allison, I'm going to wreck, say the Field of Dreams because it's, some of us get different information. So, I just, I just want to see what the options are, see what the rent would be, because I think that was one of the discussions that I had with the city manager, Ben Harvey, was there was going to be a rent to that and you add rent to the price of what this is, it's like, woo, you know, then what service we can provide if we're paying, having to pay some amount of rent. So, it probably wouldn't even hurt if we're going to, if you're going to sit with them anyway, you might as well look at what it would cost for, to say really on site option six, what would the rent be and are we going to get enclosures? Or is there enclosures? I mean, just, just ask the questions and, and just see what they say.
While you're on that subject, while we can, site option two, one of the cons, the bad things about that is turning radius.
They can talk about number two.
But they can talk about two.
Number two involves the Island Company property.
Oh, because you have to increase its size a little bit. Okay, so throw number two on there, too, Denise.
Need a few more square feet.
Right, right.
For radius turn.
Which would keep the recreation center slash performing arts center in the mix, too, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, that's...
But we'd like to get some more land for site option two, more than what we own. We only own that little square asphalt.
Dennis, going over the top, how much does that take away from the performance?
Can't give you a demand statistic, councilman. I probably should have checked on that. I could simply do it quickly tomorrow for you, but the elevation's easy to figure out. I just have to do some calculations.
I'm not, I'm not sure that Pebbley Beach is not an option.
I tend to agree with you.
Yeah.
It's flat.
Most of the time?
Yeah. I think we had Pebbley Beach Road closed only five times in 2015. Of course, we had no rain, you know?
Of course, we probably wouldn't have run the buses that, those days anyway.
And you're also installing the K-Rail system that's going to make it safer.
That's true. We're going to have K-Rail and chain link fence up in a matter of two months, so.
I think the Island Company already has a charging station out there anyways. They might be able to help us out with some of the logistics of what we're looking at.
Oh, they do. You know, my option, at their maintenance facility, that's where they were charging that Chinese bus that we saw.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's option six.
Okay. Hmm, well, that's still on the table, then.
Well, not really.
No, okay.
I mean, it was...
I mean, where would, where would we put them? Those are their garages.
Well, it could be revisited.
No, that's what we're talking about. Yeah, we're talking about revisiting and having to, yeah, yes.
It was never secured, but it was in the works and then...
It was, because we were talking money and that's, I think, why we said, let's see what we can do here because the additional money we may or may not have, so.
The ex-city manager was in discussions on a few of these locations.
Yeah. Okay, so Denise, you know what we're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring back in.
Thank you, Dennis. Excellent job on that report. Jordan, thank you for your research on the report, on the staff report. Appreciate that big time.
You want to talk about one, two, they need to get land from the Island Company?
Oh, two they would need to?
Yes, yes, so, so it's one, three, five, and nine. Council direction was to talk to the Island Company.
About two.
About the other options.
Okay. Well, I'm not opposed to site option one, which was already worked out. I think we can remedy the backing out issue and make that work.
Possibly. I'd like to know how Chief Krug feels about blocking the intersection out there if we have to back buses in, especially if we got to tow them in and we have not only a 40-foot bus, but...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two-foot bus plus another tow truck in front of it and what happens if we get stuck in the middle of the intersection when there's an emergency? I'm just kicking that idea around. I know it's something that would probably not fare well with your ideas.
That's correct. Mike Krug, Avalon Fire 420, Avalon Canyon Road. Where Dennis and I looked at the property alongside the fire station, if it was curb cut and that area was used so the buses pulled all the way off the street, it's out of the way. But obviously, if there was some problem with the bus and they had to get the scenario you described with the tow truck, then there's always a possibility that it could be obstructed.
Have you looked at all, you looked at these three options on city property, that, this, and this?
The only one I looked at was the fire station one.
So maybe, and I think because, do you have a picture of option one?
I do.
And the backing out, do you, do you see, and you understand what the concept would be, do you see one option worse than the other?
From the, from the fire safety perspective?
Yes.
My only concern with option one is they would require the bus to be backed in, right? But that's more of a, that would be more of an issue for the drivers to just be prudent when they're backing in and making sure they don't back into someone or something. And I suspect the new buses have a camera.
Yeah, they have backup cameras.
Pardon me?
They do have backup cameras.
Okay, great, perfect.
But if the bus is disabled, then we're talking, and the maintenance is going to be done there, we're talking other problems.
And it also looks like that option nine at the fire department is also the most expensive option, is that? Do I have that?
There's, there's other things that we're concerned about.
One of the most, not the most, but...
Yeah, there's other concerns because it, which also includes you and your, and your trucks, which is, we also wanted to be able to get a lift that will lift up not just the buses, but the fire engines as well. So you'd have a cargo bay with not just three bays, but four. So one that could actually has the lift on it, or we're going to have to, we're going to have to spend like 60 grand on the lifts for the buses to begin with and we can spend another 30 grand and get the lift that actually not only lifts the buses, but also lifts the fire engines when they need maintenance. So we're trying to consolidate some of the needs of the city, which is what my understanding is from the mechanics that have to do the work on these vehicles and they're all pretty much city vehicles. It would consolidate some of the expenses that we would have if we put some of these things together. And I know that's a lot to chew off, but if you guys want to talk to the mechanics anytime and let them know what your concerns are, I'm sure they'd be happy to explain it a little more in depth, things that I may leave vague, so.
How much?
Thank you, Mike.
How much room is between the county fire, or your city fire and the county building?
Baywatch?
Baywatch building.
Walkway.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What's the dimension of the, well, there's a walkway and garden, gardening.
No, it's a walkway.
Between the Baywatch building and the fire department.
The walkway between the two buildings?
Yeah.
How, how wide is it?
Yeah.
It's not wide enough for a bus, I can tell you that. And quite frankly, even if it was wide enough, putting a vehicle that size between the two buildings and electrical charging stations, now you'd, now you'd be getting into fire code and building code and...
We're grasping here. I mean, we're...
Right, right, you're reaching there, Madam Mayor.
How many, do you have any extra bays open in the fire department?
No.
No?
I don't, I don't think we're that desperate yet. We just have to keep on exploring the options we have on the table.
Thank you.
I await the results of Denise's negotiations.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And keep thinking.
Yep. All right.
Okay, and then I guess there's no place out on the mall, right?
No.
We're going to redo the mall.
Is there, is there, we have some more public comments.
Oh, great. Wait, excuse me, okay.
No talking when I'm talking. Judy Creer, 355 Dist. Council Avenue. Somebody was saying there'd be real congested here when the buses are pulling out and so on. Well, these buses better be pulling out at 6:00 or 7:00 a.m. in the morning to take people where they're going, so I don't see any conflict with the people taking their kids to school. I mean, because really, if the buses are pulling out at 8:00, they've already missed the ferries. So my comment is I think that that can be worked out. I don't think that for option one is a problem at all. And I think that the land there is, you know, I love the idea that Joe wants it to be a garden, but the school has a big garden up there and that's not being dealt with at all because there's no water. So why doesn't the community go take our buckets up and help the school with the garden there? It just seems like option one is simple and clean and close and doesn't take a lot of effort to get it done and the decision can be made pretty soon. My dealings with the Island Company, although I think that, you know, they're marvelous, they have their own agendas, so anything you ask them for, you know, you may have a long, long time before you get a concrete answer. The other thing is taking the buses up by the dump and places like that. I think you should take those off right now because those buses will come down the hill and they'll be all dirty and then you won't like that at all. And I'm just kind of joking, but my feeling is number one in the congestion isn't really a problem and it shouldn't be if you're running your buses correctly. The other thing, if you don't mind me saying, on February 26th, at the Catholic Church, we're having an immigration naturalization and I forgot to say that earlier.
Okay, thank you.
We still had a minute left.
Okay, so.
Okay, so we have directions.
Well, should we give a timeline, a timeline to Denise, for those of you who can talk about it?
I think she can come back the next meeting because I think...
Is that soon enough? Two weeks? Two weeks?
I'll be at Hawaii.
Oh, yay.
Can I report back to you on a memo and we could get some, so we get this going quick?
Oh, of course, yes, whatever you want to do. Yes, 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 that's great. Okay, well, thank you. Okay, if there's no further business, this means...
Nope.
Hospital board.
I know, that's a separate meeting.
Well, this meeting isn't adjourned because we have closed session. We have three closed session items.
Oh, so I can adjourn it. Okay, but in the meantime, go ahead, Ollie.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting Tuesday, February 16th at 9:06. Ms. Ratty, would you call the role, please?
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Marshall?
Here.
Trustee Sampson?
Here.
And Chairman Olson?
Here. Written communications.
I have none.
Oh, good. Presentations.
None.
None. Oral communication. This is a time for the audience, who's mostly left, to accept comments from the public at this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes or less. Flocking to the podium. Consent calendar.
I have two items on the consent calendar. It's actions from the January 19th Hospital Board of Trustees and the second item is the CEO's board report for January 2016 and the CFO's financial statement for December 2015 and recommended action is to receive and refile those reports.
Board members, any thing?
I'd like to pull number two.
You'd like to pull number two, okay. Public discussion on number one, not flocking. Motion for number one?
Motion to approve number one, item number one.
Second?
Second.
Second. Call for the question.
All eyes?
Here's Ms. Cassidy.
I was thinking that the CEO would be here, so I had a number of questions, but I guess I will reach out to him separately. Do we know if the monthly board meeting minutes are public information?
Yes, it comes in the packet that I have, trustee Cassidy. It's just never been included. If that's, I mean, the entire packet they give me, you know, it's about this thick.
It's a big one, I've got it.
And historically, when I started here, it was always just these items that were ever on it, but you could certainly request additional items or always come and look at them. Ollie gets them, he gets a packet, I guess because he's the chairman. I could scan the documents to you or whatever you'd like.
I definitely do not want to have a photocopy of them, but in the case of when the community is asking questions, I'm feeling under-aware of some of the happenings at the board. So I thought I'd ask if I could, and I'm happy to get a scanned copy.
Would you like me to include that every month and then, the board?
I don't think it needs to be in the packet in hard copy, but if we could get an electronic version or at least myself, an electronic version of the board minutes, board meeting minutes, that would be great.
Okay.
Got it.
And I just had a bunch of questions on the CEO's report, so I suppose that I'll just defer those to...
Would you like me to ask him to come to the second meeting in March?
I'll reach out to him separately then, so we can move forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Comment for the public? A motion?
Summer.
Second, second, it's item two. Call for the question.
Four eyes and one no, trustee Cassidy.
Okay.
General business, there is none. Chairs report? I have no report. Members report?
None.
Will adjourn.
Okay, we have three closed sessions for regular meeting, conference with real property negotiators, senior doc, and Faye, public employee performance valuation, facility operations consultant, and conference with labor negotiators regarding the management exempt and unrepresented employees. No reportable action.
Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony. Meeting adjourned.